I call this meeting of the Board of Education a regular meeting to order for the October 21st, 2014 meeting. Present -- a short pause. Present is Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Convetito, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Phil Dwyer, Mr. Fattabean, Mrs. Maxon Cunelli, Mr. Llewellyn, Mr. Patton, and we also have our three student representatives for the year at their first meeting. Mr. Kush, Ms. Finity, and Mr. Schuster. So, welcome aboard to all. If I could ask you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sorry, I should have asked you to remain standing. Thank you. Some of you know that we lost a member of our family, a certain person who was very active in the PTA, and Tricia Money, who some of you know, and I actually know some of her relatives, I didn't know her directly. And so, we're saddened by that impact, and I'd ask you to stand for a moment of silence for her family. Now, before I go into the student reports, I wonder if I might ask, so that I can have some sense of judging the agenda and time, you're all here for the recognition of PTA leaders, and I only have one person that really wants to speak. Maybe that's not exactly true. Could I get a show of hands as to how many speakers we might anticipate during the public comment session, so I'll have a sense of judging where we are with time, whatnot? So, please, if you could, just so I can -- I've got like, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, about 10 or 11 speakers. That's manageable. If all of you raised your hands, that would be difficult. So, thank you. About 11 or so speakers. Student reports, so we'll go in the order that's on the agenda, and that's Mr. Tyler Schuster first from Fairfield Ward High School. What would you like to share with us?
I mean, we have a lot going on right now. We have our homecoming pep rally and football game coming up this weekend. We have a fall concert coming up this Thursday, and another one next Wednesday. Today, we had the Connecticut Supreme Court appear at our school, which we were very honored to have the privilege of hosting them at our school, as well as all of the students and faculty felt it was a great opportunity to see everything we were learning in the classrooms actually used in real situations. The biggest thing recently is the new food service that we have at Ward, and the general consensus is that everybody is much happier with the new food, and it tastes much better than last year. However, there's some complaints about it being more expensive than last year, and you getting a smaller portion. Other than that, we have the end of the first quarter, October 31st, and we had the summer reading book chats as well in the first couple of weeks of school, which we all got into groups and spoke about the books that we read over the summer. And that's everything for really this first quarter, and then we move on to the next one.
So, one of the things I did not warn you about is that after each presentation, I ask if the Board have any questions of the students. They generally don't ask you tough questions, but be prepared in case they do. Any questions from the Board for Representative from Fairfield Ward? No? Thank you. So, ladies first for Fairfield Ludlow, or men first? Your choice.
We plan to some accident stuff.
Okay. Fair enough.
All right. Well, before we begin our reports, I just wanted to say that Suzanne and I are very excited to be here, really. Both of us really wanted this, so just we're gonna go out and get it this year, hopefully. We decided to split ours into two parts about different topics. I'm going first. She's gonna cover college stuff and sports, and I have everything remaining. So, in terms of student government, we've had a lot of stuff that they've been doing lately. They're right now in the middle of planning Spirit Week, which is Halloween, Decades Day, Character Day, and they're deciding on the fourth day right now. Our homecoming dance has just been scheduled for November 15th, and just recently, actually, in the last two weeks, we had a couple of programs come through the school that raised awareness for specific issues. First, we had the distracted driving school, which came through two weeks ago, was organized through the Department of Transportation, and that had juniors and seniors going to a seminar on the dangers of distracted driving, and then later in the day, we had an opportunity to go and actually do a simulator, which was very interesting, and I think illuminating for a lot of people. And then, this last week, we had Red Ribbon Week, which was about raising awareness for the dangers of underage drinking, and, you know, drugs and other just general bad behavior. So, that was just a series of presenters. And then, tomorrow, we have the annual school climate survey, in which students can express their opinions on school policies, and just generally how they're feeling, so that should be interesting. And then, senior class has started selling the T-shirts to fundraise for prom. For drama, the casting for the fall play finished last week. They have -- the play is gonna be Holiday Memories, which is gonna have two different acts with two different leads, and they're pretty excited about that. It's a little bit different. Finally, we have a couple of clubs doing some interesting stuff this fall. Young Adult Cancer Society is participating in the Making Strides race. Acapella, the acapella team has been performing all over, most recently at a Sound Tigers game just this Sunday. The AFS citrus sale, which is, you know, an annual thing, is currently in progress, and it wraps up on November 10th, which -- and the proceeds from that go to their AFS service trip. And then, finally, the FBLA is planning their annual small business day for next month. It'll be before the next meeting, and that's always an interesting thing, where we have a couple of symposiums from small businesses to come in and share what they do.
Ms. Finity.
So, Max mentioned the citrus sale. I'm part of AFS, so if you want any citrus, they're $22 for a small box. So, recently, at home games, there's been an increase in drinking, and students who decide to show up to games under the influence of drugs and alcohol. The administration has taken several steps to curb these numbers and educate students why this behavior is negative and dangerous. Programs like Red Ribbon Week, which Max mentioned before, the Freshman Forum, and the Health Education Curriculum are instrumental in decreasing the amount of students who make the decision to drink or engage in risky behavior. Teenage drinking has been ingrained in our society, and it is now important for schools, families, and the community to continue to educate students so they know the possible repercussions of their actions. On a lighter note, FLHS Call Sports are coming to a successful end. Senior night for field hockey, girls soccer, and football are coming up, and senior night for cross-country, boys soccer, and swimming and diving have already occurred. The field hockey, boys' and girls' soccer teams and swimming beat Ward this year, I'm And all athletes eagerly await the start of the FSAC and State tournaments and hope for long runs in each. Lastly, college. While some seniors have completed their early action applications, others are still waiting for the November 1st and November 15th early decision deadlines. All these students, myself and Max and Tyler included, continue to work hard and to complete both the coursework and applications on time. These students are under a considerable amount of stress, and ask that teachers be a bit more understanding when giving work so close to the November 1st and November 15th deadlines. Students applying to early decision should hear back from their colleges by December 15th. Hopefully, it will be nothing but good news, but Max and I will most definitely keep you informed as we get closer to the deadlines.
Same warning to my students from Ludlow, and any questions of the Board for our representatives from Fairfield Ludlow High School. Mr. Patton.
So, have you heard, or do you have any opinions on the new food service program?
I'm gonna go first then.
I'm gonna put you in the spot. Well, personally, I mean, I eat from the cafeteria a little less frequently than most students, maybe, you know, once a week, or, you know, once every two weeks, but I've gotta say that it is, it's definitely a big change from last year. I think there's a lot more variety. I have noticed it does seem a little bit more expensive, but there's, I think that, first of all, the option of having pizza every day is stellar. But, I think it's overall an improvement.
I bring my lunch from home every day. I actually don't eat lunch, I'm a nerd, I go to the library and study, but I haven't heard any complaints from my younger brother and sister, so I think it's been a good change. The only thing I might add is, I don't know if it's possible, but maybe serving coffee in the cafeteria? I know that might be a stretch, and I know it's not very healthy, and I know I shouldn't be drinking it, but I can't stop myself. Thank you.
So, now, see this camera right here? Jerry, are we live or on tape? So, if your mother just tuned in to see you at your first Board of Ed meeting, is that the first time she's learned that you don't eat lunch?
Oh, well, my dad's in the back corner. But I think he knows.
Okay. Thank you. If no other questions, my annual, actually, each meeting invitation, that you are welcome to stay with us through the entire agenda, or you can stay for a while and then leave, or you can leave right away, because we know that you have studies and whatnot, so that is your choice. Thank you for coming. Applications. So, public comments and petitions, and as usual, we just ask you, in whatever order you stand up, to come forward, state your name and address, and you have two minutes, and we have a timekeeper, and I try and be fair to everybody by keeping people to the two minutes. So, who wants to come first?
Hi, I'm Monique Sudikoff. I live on Lockwood Road. Oh, sure.
Yeah. Yeah, this is bringing broadcast to 120 countries around the world. Please, state your name and address.
I'm Monique Sudikoff. I live on 472 Lockwood Road, and I have a sixth grader and a fourth grader here at the public schools in Fairfield. Both my boys have severe food allergies, so I'm here to talk about the policy. I first wanted to thank you for taking on the policy. Having dealt with allergies in the school system for the past 12 years, I do think there is a need for a renewed policy and more information. I do not think this is the right policy for Fairfield schools because of the school's safe food list. I think that's really bad policy, and from a personal note, I think limiting the snacks that are available in our elementary school classrooms is going to be very burdensome for parents. I think it would be almost impossible. For me, as a kid with, as a parent of kids with multiple allergies, there's almost nothing on that list that my boys can eat. It's, I think, going to be impossible for teachers to execute this safely. I think it's gonna create a lot of negative feeling, and I don't think it's gonna make our kids any safer. So, in terms of policy, I think the Centers for Disease Control has issued really great policies that they issued in 2013. It's actually supported by the Food Allergy Research and Education Group, which is one of the preeminent resources for people with allergies, and they do not support this type of limited snack list. They actually have very reasonable steps that are summarized in a two-page document, and it's much easier to execute. So, again, I think this is bad policy. I think it's going to be burdensome for parents, create a lot of negative feeling, and it's not going to make our kids any safer.
Thank you very much. If anybody, whoever's next, I would invite you to move the microphone close to you so that the TV audience can benefit by both seeing and hearing you. Thank you. State your names and address.
Hi, my name is Karen Ronald, and I'm the Town Librarian for the Fairfield Public Library System, and I'm coming here to support the K-12 Library Media Curriculum. I've brought our teen librarian, who works in the trenches with the students, so we have reviewed the curriculum. We think it's a model for any other schools going forward. Very, very impressed with the systematic and comprehensive approach to library science. We know that 21st century students have challenges when it comes to information literacy and competency, and we think if this plan is adopted, they'll certainly master the skills that they need for work-life and for going forward for further degrees.
I was honored to participate in a focus group for this curriculum, and I cannot state how deeply impressed I was with the work of the Library Media Specialists in putting this together. We live in such an information-rich society, it's vital for students to not only be able to understand the resources they're using, but to also be able to interpret information. This curriculum is an excellent framework for the development of these skills, and what I'm most impressed about is that the way it's written, it is very open to future technological evolutions. It's a dynamic, dynamic curriculum that's gonna be of great benefit to teachers, students, parents, and those of us who work with young people outside of the school, like myself as the teen services library. And so, I would urge you to adopt this new change in the curriculum, because it is outstanding. Thank you.
And both of you finished within the two-minute time period, which is generally for one person, so thank you. We have a, we have a second one in case somebody needs it, right? They can use either microphone, Jerry? Okay. Please state your name and address.
Steve O'Brien. I live at 39 Lisbon Drive, North Stratfield Section. I have three kids all in the school district currently, and I'd like to speak to the allergy management policy proposal. I have two concerns about this policy. One of them is personal, philosophical. My wife and I have made very carefully weighted decisions since our children were born about what to feed and what not to feed them, and because of a history of, a medical history on both sides of our family, we have avoided prepackaged and processed foods. We haven't always been perfect in that regard, but the responsibility that we have and the choices that we've made have been our own, and we feel really uncomfortable with the idea of however well-meaning a group of people from Central Office, Board of Ed, or whoever is involved in making a list that is, that will eventually be used and will evolve over time, to usurp that responsibility that we have to our kids. The other concern that I have is more practical. I just don't think, based on the research that I've done, primarily here in Connecticut, but I also reference, wanna reference the CDC source that was mentioned earlier, it just doesn't seem as though this is a policy that would work. It would create a lot of, a lot of anxiety in the classroom, and perhaps create a sense of false security for those with dangerous food allergies. The Greenwich Public Schools don't have this, Darien doesn't have this, New Canaan doesn't have this, Westport doesn't have this, and they all state something basically along these lines. This is the, from the Greenwich document.
If I could, because you're at your two minutes.
I am?
Yeah.
Snap.
So, and for past speakers and future ones, I always invite you that if you have a written document that you'd like to make sure the Board has been able to read, feel free to give it to our clerk, and she'll make copies and get it to us.
I will. Since they didn't use 30 seconds, can I have their 30 seconds?
No, unfortunately, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to be fair to all concerned.
I get it. Thank you very kindly.
Come forward and state your name and address, but again, give it to them, if you give it to her, she'll circulate it. Please state your name and address.
Ooh, that was accidental. Trudy Terrell, Woodcrest Road. I have a student at Woods and a student at Holland Hill. My purpose tonight is to share some numbers with you regarding the proposals for the school renovations in the next long-range facilities plan. So, bear with me, please. I'm sorry, my printer was not working, so I have to read it off of my computer. 2011, the year the current plan was voted in by the Board of Education, which included Holland Hill's school project. 328, the projected number of students at Holland Hill in 2010 and 11, the year of the current plan and its acceptance. 30, the increase in student enrollment during that school year to end the year with a total of 358. 23, the percent of increase in student enrollment at Holland Hill in the past five years. 395, the projected enrollment for the current 2014-15 school year. 408, the June 2014 enrollment and the current enrollment, an increase of 3.2% over the projection. If that trend continued over the next five years, there would be over 470 students at Holland Hill by the time that the, one of the proposals up for discussion tonight would come to fruition. 10, the number of students short of meeting the 15-16 projected enrollment. 2014, the year Holland Hill's project was supposed to begin, but had to be postponed due to understandable unforeseen circumstances. 2, the number of students away from being beyond the class maximum for kindergarten classes. When, not if, those students arrive, it will necessitate a fourth first-grade classroom in 2015-16. This in turn will necessitate moving art to a push-in program on a cart. The Holland Hill community has been waiting since prior to the 2011 plan's approval. It simply cannot wait any longer. The needs that existed in 2011 remain, and the situation is now compounded by the current burgeoning enrollment. No matter what method is used, the numbers do not add up to 2020. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Maria DePiro, 131 Bulkeley Drive. I first want to say that I am the parent of two children with severe peanut allergies, so I have intimate experience with the challenges an allergy family faces, but I urge you not to support the policy as currently written. The vast majority of this policy is actually very good and consistent with policies recently put into place in communities throughout Connecticut. Where the policy falls short is within the Prevention Section, specifically the letter C, food in elementary schools. I have followed the Policy Committee's discussions, and they've heard from me on a consistent basis over the eight months they've worked on this policy. I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional, but my kids are actually also very upset with this, and they will probably be here in November. There are two points that have remained constant in my communication. Specific foods should not be banned, and families should not be told what they can and cannot feed their children. An approved snack list does not necessarily keep allergy children safe, especially, and I'll read from a section of the Connecticut State Department Education Guidelines, a document which is specifically referenced in this policy, and here's what it says about food bans. "School-wide bans of specific foods may not render the school environment safe because there is no method to ensure that the allergenic food does not inadvertently enter the school grounds. Bans can create false sense of security, which can lead to less responsible approaches to effective management strategies, education, and emergency responses." It further goes on to say that banning can actually be problematic because of defining limits. So, while it may mean banning peanuts for some students, will it also mean the banning of all nuts, milk, or other foods for other students?
Excuse me, I know two minutes comes very fast, but the two minutes is up. Again, if you have--
So, I just urge you to push it back to policy. We can do better than this.
Thank you. If you have any, that you wanna, if you wanna leave the fold with this secretary, you're welcome.
You all should have letters that were mailed if you're not on policy committee.
Yes. That's okay. Thank you. Anybody else wishes to speak? Come forward. State your name and address.
My name is Aileen Landry. I'm at 1038 Galloping Hill Road, and I have three children, two with allergies, one without, so I can play both sides of the game. My youngest, who's currently in kindergarten, is allergic to peanuts, tree nuts, wheat, eggs, milk, soy, various fruits, various vegetables. So, he has a very limited diet. So, I, with that, believe that this list is too restrictive. It doesn't, it just doesn't offer what all the children will need, and I'm gonna echo some of the things that have already been said. I think it's gonna create a continued animosity amongst children who have allergies and create the problems, we can't have parties because of you, now we can't have snacks because of you. I think there's a cause for potential bullying and isolation of a child with allergies. I think a list like this fails to teach life-learning skills in an environment where, once they leave this restricted list and move on, where there's no restrictions, they're at a loss to self-advocate, because they haven't learned it, at such, you know, a vital educational experience. I also believe in the false sense of security, and that the heightened sense of awareness will dwindle, and that's when accidents can happen. So, monitoring daily snacks will retract from both academic and social opportunities. So, I would like to just go on record to say that I disagree with the current policy suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come forward, state your name and address. Let's think of that as the seashore coming to port.
I'm feeling so calm. I almost am forgetting what I wanna talk about. Not really. Suzanne Meska, 123 Rygate Road. One of the high school students had mentioned kind of the topic that I wanna address tonight, except in a different way. To, we have 17 schools in the district. My goal and thought process was that all 17 were run together. Our curriculum was together, our administration staff was together, we were all in this together. But two incidents that have come up in the recent weeks have me a little concerned, and it's about the policies, protocols, and procedures as to how things are done. That being, while I appreciate, we obviously have a situation at FLHS in regards to security and safety at football games, I am concerned that we were not reaching out to the Fairfield Police Force. I am concerned that the discussion and decisions were not made at the top level, they were made at a school level. I feel that those are pretty big decisions, and they need to be district-wide discussion between both principals at both high schools before a decision is made. I'd like to know where the money for a security service was, and if that is part of a principal's discretionary account, it needs to be clearly noted in the Board of Ed budget, because it's not in there. In addition, to then find, and while I applaud the Ward students on their accolades, to see that they made the Newsweek article, I give them credit. On the other side, I think the decision has to be made by the CEO of the district if all schools are going to participate in a survey or not. To have the Ludlow community not represented due to the fact that a principal decided not to participate in the survey does not bode well for the school, does not bode well for the town. I've lived through when Stratfield School was a blue-ribbon school, and everyone wanted to move to that district because that was the title that it had.
Excuse me, your two minutes is up.
Oh, can it be already? Thank you for your time.
But as an old hand at this, many times you are right on the dot in two minutes, so maybe next time. Please state your name and address.
Camille Chakamaza, 200 Hollydale Road. I'm the mother of three children in Fairfield. I have 13-year-old twins with severe nut allergies, and I would also like to go on record that I'm not in support of a list mandating what foods should or shouldn't be eaten at school. I understand the fear of a child dying from a nut allergy. I believe it's not fair or realistic to put this fear on to a community. I believe it's not right to tell people what food is good or safe for an entire community. I do believe, however, that tolerance and understanding is a key to success, and with that, fear dwindles. All families in the Fairfield School District deserve the opportunity to continue to practice tolerance and acceptance. It's my family's experience that through communication and education-- It's my family's experience that through communication and education, my children have learned and accepted personal responsibility for their nut allergy. For those who are in their direct community, an open line of communication surrounding food has been successfully established. It's imperative that we teach our kids this tolerance and understanding so that they become empathetic adults. The dictation of a food list is not the answer. Our kids still have to one day live on their own, and isn't it our job to prepare them? I propose that the schools take time to teach kids about allergies, disabilities, so that they can relate and understand, so educators can continue to educate and not police food, and so kids can feel ordinary and blend in, so parents can feel good about supporting those in their community who need it. As parents, we need to lead by example, and from experience, and this is through talking to my kids who have the nut allergies, they feel, as well as I do, that people will be annoyed with a food list and will displace their anger and frustration on those with the food allergies, creating a bigger issue and a division.
Thank you very much.
And lastly, every allergy case is unique.
Thank you very much. Do we have other people that wish to come forward? Please state your name and address.
Hi, good evening, Tricia Donovan, Fairfield resident. I too, I'm the parent of children with food allergies. I have one child without and two children with multiple life-threatening food allergies. I am thrilled that the policy is finally coming up to speed. It's going to be an eight-year learning curve that we have to fill. I am thrilled that there will be education to help our children stay safe, especially in the learning environment. Every year that my children have been in the school, I have received calls from parents saying, please give me a list of what we can bring that is safe. So I don't know if this is the best solution, but I hope that we can engage in a very positive, constructive dialogue that will not ostracize or make people feel left out. I hope that the attitudes that I'm hearing on Facebook do not pass down to the children because they are affected by this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish, I see somebody? Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name's Loretta J., one sixteen Rolling Ridge Road. I'm the parent of two children, both of whom have had extensive food allergies, multiple food allergies through most of their elementary years. I'm here tonight to ask you respectfully to please vote no on this policy, and send it back to the policy committee and ask them to try again. The, my primary concern with this food allergy policy is that it does have a safe food allergy list, and I am very concerned that this will create divisiveness and ostracize, and will ostracize children. I really believe the policy must be inclusive and protect children from physical and emotional harm, and that it must work for the vast majority of students while still protecting all children. And I don't, I don't see this policy as doing that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else coming forward, so we'll call the public comments and petitions session to a close and move on to our regular agenda. Item number five, presentations, just before I, I'll do that, and then I'll make a comment about the rest of the agenda. Once a year, we try to make sure that each board member can attend a PTA meeting so that we can improve communications and answer questions and just get to hear what the concerns are. But we also, once a year, like to bring the PTA board reps to a board meeting specifically for recognition, to recognize the value that we place on the PTA, and so I've asked Mrs. Gerber if she would do that.
Okay, well, is it not on?
Yeah.
Is it on? Okay, sorry. Yeah, well, normally, the only people in the audience, other than staff, are usually Board of Ed reps, so it's easy to pick them out, but this, there's such a big crowd here tonight. So what I'd like to do is just have any of the Board of Ed reps for any of our schools, PTA council, SEPTA, to come up and introduce themselves, and this is just a way for us to thank you for all of the work that you do, coming to our meetings, disseminating the information, getting it out to all of your different PTAs. You do a great service. It's not a diff, easy, it's not an easy one, but we do appreciate it. And so if anyone would like to come up, introduce yourselves, and just let us know where, what PTA you represent. Thank you.
It's not a question, we do want you to come forward.
Hi, Tom Kane, I'm with the Stratfield PTA.
Eric Newman, PTA council.
Shannon Kavanaugh, I'm with Dwight Elementary, and my co-chair is Annie Kreeno.
Bonnie Brothely, SEPTA.
Melanie Fox Carvalho, Stratfield.
Elizabeth Dilab, Roger Ludlow Middle School.
Leanne Ratner, Fairfield Woods Middle School.
Trudy Durrell, Holland Hill.
Kelly Dunn, Osborne Hill School and Fairfield Woods Middle School.
Julie Gottlieb, PTA council.
Hi, Leah Hertzback, proudly representing North Stratfield Elementary.
Hi, Suzanne Labella, Burr School, and Jen Wingate is my co-council.
Amy Parent, Riverfield.
Okay. Do you have a comment? Yeah. We do like to try and, I know that you've all sat down, but we do like to try and take a picture so that we can use it for publicity purposes. Now, is there somebody in the room that will admit to having probably the longest tenure because of the way kids were spaced out? How long has somebody served PTAs in one form or another? Anybody want to shout out a number? Leanne, I know that you have to be up there.
Only eight years.
Only eight years. Who's got more than eight years?
Nine.
Nine?
Fourteen.
Fourteen? Okay.
He never came up.
That's Jim Arcamondo, who has also been on the national PTA, so he's all in, if you know Texas Hold'em. Anybody can do better than fourteen years? So can I, what, what do you have, somebody over here?
Twenty.
Twenty? A round of applause. Can I get you to come up so that we can take a picture?
This is my last year.
Okay. It appears as though we have a mutiny for picture-taking, and since I normally don't like to have my picture taken either, I can certainly understand that, so we'll forego the picture at the moment. Do any board members wish to make a comment relative to PTA service? That doesn't invite you to give a twenty-minute dissertation times nine, but if any board members have a comment, feel free. Mr. Fattabey.
I'd just say I thank you all for your PTA service. I know it's important. I, many years ago, started in the PTA, and that's where I got my interest, or not my interest, developed a further interest in education as well. So I applaud you, and I think it's important for the community to have PTA volunteers, and I hope you continue for many years. Thank you.
Anybody else? So in case you didn't hear what Mr. Fattabey said, your reward is not in heaven, it's that you get to serve on the Board of Education at some day. So, any other comments, Mrs. Gerber, that you wish to make?
Just, thank you very much, and, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we'll move on to the curriculum, but before we do, we have three presentations tonight. I remind the board that this is the night where we give presentations, ask questions related to fact, and then when it comes up for vote, is when we can debate the pros and cons of whatnot. So if you have questions of the people that you want to have them be ready for further investigation, feel free to bring those up. I remind the audience that we'll not have public comment on these items because they're not up for vote tonight, but at the meeting at which they are up for vote, there will be another opportunity for public comment. At the moment, they're all scheduled at some, you know, for maybe the November meeting, but we will be having a early November meeting for the purposes of reviewing contracts, so that we can space out the agenda items. We might add one item to the agenda, so please keep track of the postings of our agenda so that you know when these will be up for a vote. So, we have a presentation of library media curriculum. Dr. Boyce, Ms. Callahan, Ms. Waters, please come forward. I see that you have an overhead projector, so we'll move around so that we can not be in the middle of it.
It's overhead, it's a projector.
It's overhead. It's a lady herself.
It's a good one.
I just wanted to make a few comments while we're setting up. Tonight, we're sharing our library media curriculum with you, and the school library media center is really the center of learning in a school. In each school, the library media specialist works both with students and teachers in a variety of ways, and I believe you will find that this curriculum really captures the complex nature of their work. So representing our library media specialist this evening, are Nikki Callahan, the liaison at the elementary level, and Carolyn Waters, the liaison at the secondary level, and I will turn the presentation over to them.
Great, good evening, everyone. Before we begin, I'd like to thank all the library media specialists who did come out tonight, and I know there are principals and teachers in the audience too, to support us, so I'd like to thank those, and especially to Karen and to Nicole from the Fairfield Public Library, who spoke at public comment. My name is Nikki Callahan, I'm library media specialist at North Stratfield Elementary School, and this is Carolyn Waters, and she is the library media specialist, one of the library media specialists at Fairfield-Ludlow High School. Before we begin, we do want to acknowledge that our curriculum looks different. This curriculum is designed to be integrated and embedded into other Board of Ed-approved curricula, and is therefore called a collaborative curriculum. But the format is a little different than the others you've probably seen, and we just want to acknowledge that before we begin. In the next few slides, we will address why the library media curriculum needs to be updated and revised. The current curriculum was passed in the year two thousand, just as the internet began to change our lives. In two thousand and four, the curriculum was last updated in order to address some of those changes, but since then, the world of technology and of information has changed dramatically and exponentially. Today, more people in the United States access the internet via mobile technology than through traditional PC computers, and the future will continue to evolve rapidly. In fact, David Worlock, a leading educational technologist, said, "For the first time in history, we are preparing students for a future we cannot clearly describe." In addition to the world changing, education has changed as well. In two thousand and two, the Partnership for Twenty-First Century Skills was founded by dozens of American corporations to define the skills they wanted to see in their workers in the new century. These skills overlay core subject areas, and as you can see, information, media, and technology skills are a large piece of those concepts needed. In addition, what has become known as the four Cs, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and creativity, are also essential skills according to this organization. Our current curriculum does touch on many of these skills, but we believe it needs to be updated to include the more comprehensive model of what we now call Twenty-First Century Continuing with educational changes since our last curriculum was passed, in addition to the Twenty-First Century Skills we just outlined, in two thousand and seven, national technology standards were updated, as were national research and information standards. Since then, NIASC, the accrediting organization for high schools, has since included these standards in their assessment of schools, and I quote from NIASC, "Indicator two, does the school have measurable Twenty-First Century learning expectations for all students that are integrated and interdisciplinary?" The Connecticut Core Standards have also been adopted since our last curriculum. These two embed research and technology skills throughout the standards. And the new Twenty-First, and the new district and state assessments, which now measure the acquisition of all these new Twenty-First Century Skills, have begun to be implemented. We believe the new curriculum will address these many educational updates and changes in one framework for Fairfield.
I just want to talk a little bit about the development of the curriculum. Because this curriculum is tied to every other discipline, the development process involved many people. The following are the steps we took to create this document. The library department started with an extensive review of national standards. We then reviewed library curricula for other towns in Fairfield County and spoke with representatives from other schools. Next, department members worked together to draft our own standards that incorporate all that we learned. Every member of the department worked on this document. From there, we reviewed the curriculum with district administrators and curriculum leaders. We also met with focus groups that included teachers from a wide range of grade levels and academic disciplines, and we adjusted the framework based on the feedback we received. After the internal review process, we presented the curriculum to a focus group that included parents, PTA council, and public library representatives. We also received feedback from the CES coordinator of the library council. The curriculum was posted online along with apparent feedback form. We made adjustments to the document based on this process.
In this section of the presentation, we will introduce you to the curriculum and provide some overview of the big ideas. As you can see, we do reference specific page numbers in the top right-hand corner of each slide of this section, so feel free to follow along in your printed copy or online of the curriculum. Before we begin, we'd just like to explain the words you see on the screen. The Library Learning Commons is a rebranding and updated name for the traditional library space. Many have viewed the library just as a place where storage of books was the central idea. In Library Learning Commons, learning and technology are central to our vision, and these spaces are on the forefront of both print and digital literacy. Library Learning Commons support knowledge building in all content areas as an extension of the classroom, and facilitate individual, small group, and whole-class learning in a wide variety of multidisciplinary units. We begin the curriculum overview with our vision listed on page three. The Library Learning Commons serves as a school's physical and virtual center for active and engaged learning. As an integral part of the school community, the program supports student achievement through inquiry-based instruction, collaborative learning, and innovative thinking, with a focus on literacies for the digital age. In the Fairfield collaborative curriculum, oops, sorry, I flipped over two pages. The Fairfield standards are synthesized from the four major national standards. The national technology standards that were updated in two thousand and seven that we referenced earlier, the information and research standards updated in two thousand and seven that we referenced earlier, as well as the Twenty-First Century Framework and the Connecticut Core Standards. We examined each very carefully and developed our own unique set of standards that incorporate both the common and the unique qualities of each of these national standards. In the Fairfield collaborative curriculum, there are five standards for learning. These are the big ideas around which the learning outcomes are written, and we'll go through each one. Number one, inquiry and information skills. We have two standards in this category. One point one, which deals with research and information skills and how students will be able to effectively find, evaluate, use, and create information. And one point two, which deals with digital citizenship, which includes both plagiarism and copyright, but also online safety and security. Number two- Number two, critical thinking and creativity. We have two standards here. 2.1 addresses critical thinking and how students will be able to analyze complex information or data and be able to draw conclusions and make decisions based on their thinking. Oh, sorry. 2.2 addresses creativity, but creativity deeply connected to the knowledge and understanding of the content area. Number three, we have three standards here. 3.1 deals with collaboration and working together to solve problems. 3.2 deals with communication, but focuses on communication out. In other words, how students present information to a specific audience, either verbally, visually, or in writing. 3.3 deals with communication as well, but focuses on how communication is received and addresses the idea of bias and perspective when analyzing information. Number four, independent reading. We are, of course, still librarians. We have two standards here. 4.1 allows students to pursue their personal literary passions and interests. 4.2 supports student reading informational texts that interest them, but also align within the classroom instruction. Number five, technology skills. We have one broad standard that addresses technology proficiency in a variety of technology systems and digital applications. They're outlined more specifically as you get into the curriculum. For each of these standards, in the Fairfield's curriculum, we have listed also the correlating national standards, and this begins on page seven, if anyone's following along. Each standard is listed, and the correlating cross-reference standards from the four national standards that were our foundation are listed next to that. We have done this for each Fairfield standard in order to provide the reference and rationale for the standards that we create. In addition, on page 10, we've taken each standard and broken them down into clear learning outcomes we want students to achieve by the time they're in 12th grade, and we did this for each of the standards. Then, we took each of those learning outcomes and broke those down and defined clearly what those would look like, K through 12. And the K through 12 continuum starts on page 13. So our big ideas of the curriculum, the big five that we would like you to remember, are inquiry and information, critical thinking and creativity, communication and collaboration, independent reading, and technology skills.
Because this is a collaborative curriculum that's shared between the library and other disciplines, these skills will be taught and assessed within the content areas. The skills and concepts will be embedded into core content instructional units and In order to make this happen, library professionals, content area teachers, curriculum leaders, and specialists need time to work together. Collaborative research is already happening at all levels. These teams will use professional time, including summer work, to embed these skills in implementation guides, performance tasks, and assessment rubrics. In this way, we'll ensure that all students in all schools will learn these skills and will be able to measure their progress through common assessments and core areas. Library professionals will also use summer work time to replace traditional library websites with virtual learning spaces for all members of the learning community. As far as texts and materials, Fairfield School libraries already contain carefully selected resources that support inquiry, research, reading, and learning in all disciplines for a wide range of learning styles and levels. As we implement this curriculum, students at all levels need greater access to digital resources. We will subscribe to age-appropriate databases at all levels to ensure consistent access and use of digital content.
So in conclusion, we refer you back to the quote at the beginning of the presentation, "For the first time in history, we are preparing students for a future we cannot clearly describe." But I'd also like to share with you another quote. Franklin Roosevelt said, "We cannot always build the future for our youth, but we can build our youth for the future, and this updated collaborative curriculum will allow students to build the skills and concepts needed for their futures." So I leave you with the Fairfield collaborative curriculum.
Oh, power it off, okay. Yeah, I think so. Oh, that'd be better. Yeah, it's fine, yeah. Are you okay?
The PowerPoint is finished, but do you have any closing statements you want to make without the aid of the PowerPoint, Dr. Boyce?
No, we'd just like to see if there are any questions.
Okay. Board members, any questions that you wish to ask at this time, or comments that you want to make relative to being ready for the next time this comes up? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, Mrs. Lou McCormick, and then Mr. Convetito, I think, is in that order? Please. And Mrs. Gerber.
Just two quick comments, and then I'm going to look over it more carefully and forward quick, and I apologize that I had to step out for a minute. Do we send any questions to you, Dr. Boyce? Okay. Just to, first of all, thank you for a wonderful presentation, very comprehensive, and it certainly answers a lot of questions ahead of time. And I just want to put one word out there, what I really especially liked about it, considering we're just coming off of approving our mission and goals, and how much I saw that reflected in the curriculum presented here before us, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lou McCormick.
I have two questions, just kind of how this whole thing works. It sounds really wonderful, you know, the whole kind of bringing everything together, I think is probably long overdue, so it's a really great update. I've received a couple of questions from different parents, so I just thought I would raise them because I didn't really know the answer. In terms of library time, so I see this is the library curriculum. I know in the past, it had been habit to march the kids in for library time, to check the books out, and then to leave, and my understanding is that, is that changing, so that now it's kind of independent going to library, so there's no more of the old-fashioned, the whole class goes to library at once?
At the elementary level?
Yes, I'm sorry, at the elementary level.
So, I wasn't introduced, but my name's Michael Rafferty. I am, probably all wondering why I'm sitting here. Dr. Katia Leonard has, you know, moved on, and I'm the new interim director of elementary education. So, there is a time when, there is a combination of set and flex time, so there is a time when students do go to the library, and they still engage in a lot of the practices that they would have normally. I can get you more information about how that works at every school, about when books are checked out. It's a little hard for me to answer that question right now without having done the research for you.
I can answer the book checkout question.
Students are welcome in all of our libraries at any time to come and look for books and to check out books, to come and work, to come in with group projects. They are welcome at any time from the classroom to come in. We do have, right now, a fixed schedule at elementary. I think some people call it tech time, but it's a fixed library schedule, but we also do a lot of flex projects as well.
Okay, thank you. So, I'll assume that we really haven't changed that much in format, where the class still kind of goes together to the library, to experience the library as a class, it's not just independent?
We had 15 years of flex.
Yeah, I think that, all those practices are still in place. We're waiting for this curriculum to be able to be, to be able to provide better direction for the library and the students going to it, so everything has been as it always been in terms of checking out.
Oh, I'm sorry, I mean, as part of the new curriculum, will it be the same, where, you know, the teacher will take the whole class to experience tech time, or is it more independent going in and out for the libraries?
I almost hate to call it tech time. I think it was inappropriately labeled, and it's misleading. It makes it sound like it was something new and different. So what exists right now is what has always existed, so children go into a library for a variety of purposes. So, we will most likely use part fixed and part flex in our schedule when we do this curriculum, because we know we want to work on foundational skills for kids to develop in their visits to the library, but we also want to have this collaboration across the content areas, and we're going to use the library curriculum as a way to meet with other content areas, social studies, language arts, math, science, to be able to have kids engage in deeper and more robust activities related to application of the curriculum areas.
So I'll take that to mean we're going to do both. We'll do both group and individual stuff.
Yes.
Okay. And then the second question was regarding the apps. I know you said that we, and there clearly have been so many really interesting, cool educational apps that the kids have access to. I guess the question relates to, one, what is the process by which we select the apps? Like, who screens them for content and appropriateness? And then, secondary, this question was an interesting one that had been raised to me, do we screen the pop-ups, or the different types of things that are, I don't know what you call them, those advertisements that come up with the different apps when we pull them up? I know there was some concern about propaganda or what have you that links itself to some of these educational apps, and how are we handling that process? So first, the selection, and then the stuff that seems to attach itself to what we pick.
Well, I think there's two things going on. The curriculum leaders are obviously involved in the selection of apps that are instructionally appropriate, but there is a, the IT department has put together a committee with curriculum leaders, teachers, there's even some community members, and we're trying to do a uniform process to be able to select the apps, so that it's not all willy-nilly, and that they've been vetted, and we can go through them for that issue that you just raised. So the committee is now trying to come up with a clear process in terms of how do we buy the apps, install the apps, and make sure that they're updated regularly and appropriate.
Okay, so we're going to be making some sort of a process or protocol for that as part of this?
Yes.
Okay. And I think that was it, so thank you.
Thank you. I think Mr. Convetito was next.
One, thank you very much. I thought it was a great presentation. I love page seven with the cross-references to the Common Core and the standards. I thought that was extremely helpful, to be able to get online and cross-reference those. Couple of questions I have. I've watched technology evolve in this district for the last 14, 15 years, and years ago, when my son was in middle school and high school, I used to go down and turn off the Wi-Fi, because I just knew he was just surfing the net at night, and now I could do that, and I get, "I'm doing homework." So, I've watched that progression, I'm happy to see that. A couple of concerns I have, one is particularly at the elementary and the middle school level, when kids are doing online research, are we using a closed universe, or are we just wide open on the Internet?
Well, it's a good IT question, but the basic answer is that, as a condition of our getting funding through the Universal Service Fund, we access our network through the Connecticut Education Network, and that is screened. So, there is monitoring of it, we have a text app that monitors people that find their way around it, but you are required to filter Internet under the statute, and we do engage in that, that's part of our program.
Breakdown of the 72,000 or 73,000 plus or minus for the implementation? You knew I was going to ask that.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. What we'd like to do over the summer, and this mostly involves paying teachers to work over the summer, we'd like to have a multi-year implementation plan where the library media specialists work with teachers from specific departments in order to plan activities and assessments that are content-related, because this curriculum doesn't exist without a content, has to be applied to a content. And our plan was, as curriculum, subject matter curriculum is approved, it would follow with summer work. So for example, last year, the board approved the English curriculum, so we'd probably start with the English content over the summer, and have English teachers and library media specialists work together for the first summer. Next year, you will get the social studies curriculum, so what would follow immediately would be work with the social studies department, and roll it out through each of the content areas and world language, so five content areas over the summers. So most of the money that we're talking about in that amount, in the program implementation account, would go toward paying teachers to work during the summer.
Okay, so there's no, other than what we have in the budget as far as hard costs, these are what I would call soft costs. These are labor-intensive stuff.
Well, we always have curriculum implementation funding, so really, it's a matter of what we, you know, we spend it on. So in the aggregate, this may or may not actually add to the budget number, it may be just that we're not doing as much in one area, we're going to spend it here, it sort of rolls over. Curriculum development, implementation, so yes, it would be in that particular account that you've seen in the budget, it's not a text and materials line.
Okay. My other question is, given that this is, I think, the only K through 12 curriculum that we see, okay, and you're rolling this out across 11 elementary schools, three high schools, and three middle schools, how long is that going to take you, and is that enough funding to be able to roll this thing out within one or two years?
We gave that a lot of thought, and what we're doing, it isn't as though we're not doing anything right now, so we're taking activities and projects and assessments that already exist and building upon those. When teachers come together in their department meetings or grade-level meetings, they will be sharing those between schools and across schools, so there'll be a lot of sharing of information that's already in place, and as the new work is developed, it will become part of the implementation guides that follow every curriculum that we, that the board approves, and every teacher receives the implementation guide. So the curriculum leaders, and the curriculum leaders, or coordinator for world language, will be responsible for ensuring that all the teachers in the department receive that information and are implementing it.
One final question, and then I'll let it go. We have a couple more curriculums coming up, and I'm just curious what the interaction is with developing new curriculums and the interaction with the library, and because it's becoming more dependent on IT and technology, are we, are these people having more of a role in developing those other curriculums because of the way we access information now?
Well, I think probably the most obvious example, and they do have a role, social studies is a good example. In this year, social studies is in its review and research year, and they'll be writing their curriculum and bringing it to you next year, and they will be working very closely with our library media specialists, because a large part of the social studies curriculum will be an emphasis on research, and they won't be doing any research without very close work with the library media specialists. So that's a very good example. There are some subjects that lend itself quite easily to that, social studies being one, English being another, but it certainly is very possible to do in math. Science will be the following, the year following social studies, and now that, you know, once this curriculum is in place, we'll have an easier way, actually, to bring together the library media specialists and the content teachers, because we'll already have this framework in place.
Okay. And my last comment, and always goes back to this, is I didn't notice a specific, excuse me, a specific prong in here about online bullying and so forth. I know it was sort of mentioned in passing, but is there an actual educational component to that?
As part of the digital citizenship, that online safety and security is part of that. I believe the health curriculum has online bullying in there.
So you'll be working with them?
Happily, and we do already, yeah.
All right, thank you very much, it was a great presentation.
Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, thank you very much, this was really a great presentation. I think most of my questions were actually covered, although I did, you were talking briefly about different schools collaborating with one another. How much does that take place, just, especially on the elementary level, I'm thinking, because there are so many elementary schools? And I guess also, you mentioned doing other towns' curriculum, is there, moving forward, also collaboration with other towns to see what they're doing? Again, because things change, and will be, I'm sure, continuing to change very quickly once this goes through. once this goes through. So how, just how does that work? Just kind of staying on top of it within the district and then also looking to other districts nearby to see, to get ideas from there and share ideas?
All right, so let me see if I can answer them in the audio rest. So the first one, then, the collaboration across schools would be in the summer work when we decide what's an appropriate application in English, language arts, where children can employ what they've learned in the curriculum area to be able to use it in the library learning commons. And that helps us ensure consistency across the school. So that's not to say that we couldn't put schools together. That would be, that'd be on us to answer at this point, but when we do the summer work, maybe that's a possibility. Since I'm new to it, I may get the name of it wrong, but we work, we visit CES and they have a consortium or some sort of group that...
They have two groups. CES has two groups. One is the CES Library Council, which we go to, and that is represented from every town in Fairfield County. And we talk about this kind of thing. And we're also part, do you want me to mention it? We're also part of, CES has initiated this year a two- to three-year rollout of library learning commons. And there are 14 towns this year that applied and were accepted. We were one of them to be part of this rollout. And we are working with 14 other districts in Fairfield County to roll this out. And part of that is comparing and talking about curriculum as well as some other things.
And it's actually the mission of the, when I visited, it's actually the mission of the committee. They do exactly what you just asked, is they make sure that they share best practices and resources that they find are working.
Thank you. And then I guess just to touch on something that Mrs. Lou McCormick mentioned, just in terms of, you know, especially, again, on the elementary level, just with the whole idea of the classes going in. I mean, I do know, I used to shelve books at Osborne Hills Library for many years and it was always so great to see, you know, yes, there'd be a class going in to do the computer work, but then there'd be, you know, two, groups of two and three, you know, first graders or second graders coming in to take their books out. And then as I'd be leaving, there'd be a group coming in to work on their big six project. So, I mean, there was a certain fluidity where you would have classes, but there would be small groups of students coming in throughout the course of the day. So I'm, it sounds as if that will continue, which I think is such a great thing so that it's not just, okay, it's your time of day, you have to go to the library now, that if you have a little time in your day, you can go down, pick out a book with a couple of friends, maybe read it for a few minutes, then go back. So I really like the idea that there's that mix where there is specific library time, but then there's also more kind of general, when you have some free time, you can do something fun and go to the library.
And that's one of the things we heard when we were at the committee, that they, that actually happens in most of the districts that were at that meeting with us.
Yeah.
A combination of both still exists.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Mr. Patton, followed by Mr. Fattabene.
I first want to say, she's smiling at me, that I was privileged to get a jump on this a little bit when Nikki Callahan, who's our new library media specialist at North Straffield, and we're thrilled to have her. Welcome.
Thank you.
Talked at a PTA meeting last month. So things like renaming library time, tech time, and there was a lot of changes even just for this year that I think a lot of parents, so far I've heard, are, were a little wary and now they're kind of more appreciative that there's a little more structure to what the library's function is and hopefully will be with this curriculum in the elementary First question is dollar-based in terms of technology. We just had a fairly decent increase in our technology budget and items, tablets, computers, et cetera, with the ASBAC test and stuff this past year. Do you see the new curriculum as having another giant leap in terms of technology needs beyond what we have now? Maybe that's a question to Dr. Title.
Well, you've got a technology plan, you know, a three-year technology plan that's finishing up this year. So one of our goals for this year is to rewrite that technology plan and bring that before you. In addition, if we feel that we need extensive additional resources beyond what's in the budget, then we would put that in the budget request for 15, 16. So I think we have it well-covered. As you said, we were fortunate that we were able to sustain an increase in the tech capital budget, but there's sort of another group looking at that angle. But clearly, the purpose of technology is to support students' learning of the curriculum. So by having this curriculum well-laid out with the objectives, it actually makes it easier to then backfill into, okay, what resources do we need to have in the district so that kids can acquire these skills?
So to kind of back into that a little bit, into what you're saying, Dr. Title or to any of the panel here, then the curriculum that's being proposed, are we on track with what we have now or are we, that's still a kind of a wait-and-see? When this is approved, we'll then reevaluate the technology that we have or need?
No, we should be fine with what we have right now, but it always can be improved.
Sure.
Stuff's going to cycle out. I mean, you know, just in the nature of things.
Right, in terms of, right, things getting old and new technology increasing and all that stuff.
Right, right, right. And we were always trying to play catch-up with that, but at this point, we have the technology to implement this, but over time, continuing to invest in that will take resources.
Okay, great. Next question is more learning curve-tiered. Anytime we implement any new type of curriculum, there's always, well, what happens to the kids that kind of, you know, if you started in eighth grade or ninth grade, what happens to the kids who didn't get that right before? So for example, there are, you know, certain things in terms of research projects and whatnot for fifth grade, and this program doesn't go until next year. So let's say the current fifth graders may not have quite an extensive, extensive version of what's in this curriculum. Then they jump into sixth grade and they've got stuff kind of thrown at them. Is there a plan to kind of step into that for the grades that will, you know, be missing out?
Do you want me to talk about that?
For, I have two points on that. The first one is, we actually have quite a vibrant library media curriculum currently, and a lot of that is happening, although maybe not as consistently as we'd like. So moving forward, it will be more consistent. And I just forgot what a... Oh, and a lot of these skills, if you look at the curriculum, are ranged over multiple years. So it might say K through two, or it might say three through five. Because we don't see students every single day, we address the skills in multiple years. So I think that might help with your worry that if you missed it in fifth grade, you won't get it in sixth. And we obviously would remediate so students would be up to level.
It wasn't, I wasn't thinking, in terms of, oh, you know, they're going to, you know, grades are going to miss a whole chunk of curriculum. It was more, well, is there a plan in place to understand, you know, how those steps up are going to have to be implemented?
So I think that's one of the things that we'll have to, we'll have to tackle when we bring teachers and this curriculum forward in the summer to be able to logically think about the first steps that we make, considering certain kids may have not had a certain experience, but add to those over time. So that's the other beauty of doing a multi-year rollout. It gives us the opportunity to bridge it in an appropriate way.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Fattabene.
Thank you for your presentation. You know, information is certainly very critical to learning as well as understanding and decision-making. And how you access that in the future, I'm sure is going to change as well. But I guess I just have a sort of a more over-general comment or request or question. And as I noticed in our agenda, that the item up for discussion was presentation of library media curriculum. The draft document, however, says K through 12 collaborative curriculum. And there's another terminology change in the document where it says library learning commons, whereas traditionally, my understanding was library media center, at least at one time. I guess I just want to comment briefly or comment in general, you know, what the, your intent to understand your significance of those terminology changes are and what, if you just want to comment on what you're trying to achieve and accomplish.
Well, it is the library media, it is the LMS department. And so when we first started in this, that was the name of it. But as Nikki and Carolyn and all of the LMS together worked on this, they really struggled with what they wanted to call this document. So we will admit that it was a last-minute revision. They thought it was, the title that you see was a much, was a better reflection of the document than simply calling it the LMS library media curriculum. They want, they wanted to gain a better title. And it really is collaborative because, as I said, it doesn't stand alone. It has to be paired with content to work. So they were trying to capture that in the title. So it was a last-minute adjustment. Do you want to talk about that?
The learning commons is a space and not a curriculum. So I think maybe that's the difference. The learning commons is more an idea of how the space functions and not what students are going to learn. So the curriculum is named different from the space also. I don't know if that's helpful. It is a little confusing. I'm sorry.
Anything else? Mr. Fattabene, are you finished? Is this the last question?
Well, it is for me.
It's the next-to-last person. Okay.
Just one quick follow-up through the chair, Mr. Patton. On one of your points, I know you frequently raise, obviously often connected with budgetary concerns, issues of technology, but just wanted to point out that, at least according to the slideshow, the technology component of this in terms of budget is software. So where normally we're talking about hardware and are we going to have equipment ready for tests, that's actually not part of this curriculum. So going, looking ahead to budget, and we're talking about cuts here, there, or everywhere, that's different here so that if, at some point, hardware is spoken being cut or increased, that this curriculum wouldn't be affected by that because this is very specifically targeted for software and getting access to the databases, et cetera. So I thought, just thought that was worth pointing out.
Mr. Llewellyn. Is Mr. Llewellyn last or is anybody else? Okay, Mr. Llewellyn, last shot.
Once again, I'd like to thank you guys as well for laying this out so clearly. Just from a, you know, 10,000 feet, how many hours is kind of, are targeted almost by elementary, middle, and high school? I can imagine that there's, you know, dedicated time in elementary and as you move into the high school, it's embedded through your social studies. Do you have a target hours kind of by grade? Because it's defined as a curriculum, but then how is that, how are we ensuring absorption through the school system?
I think it would be very difficult to put the number of hours on it because it's huge really when you get to the secondary level. The more that our library media specialists work with our classroom teachers, the more students are using the library in some way. They're using the databases or the librarian might be going to the classroom to help them understand the research process. So if you started to add all those hours together, it would be a huge amount. And I think that's part of the concept behind the library commons. You know, students can go in at any time, they can drop in and get books to read, but the library media specialist is available throughout the day also to work with teachers. So it's almost a constant collaboration.
Yeah, I fully appreciate that. Well, I guess they have dedicated time in elementary, and I'm assuming that it gets much more difficult as you move into high school for the media specialist because they're getting into much deeper things with the, with the older kids and helping them do the research. But is there, is there a dedicated time or is it not? In other words...
Not at the secondary level. It's through the content.
You know, I think we could give you an estimate.
That's fine.
Based on the dedicated time, but it would be lower than students are actually accessing it. What we could present much clearer is, once the collaboration implementation guides are set up, we'd know even more specifically how many hours. So we'd only be giving you half the picture.
Right.
And what exists now. But we could do that going forward.
Yeah, and I fully appreciate the amount of time and effort. I'm just curious, is there direct time where the kids are sitting in the library, learning how to use it? I think that's at the elementary is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, we can give you...
Okay. That's all I was looking for.
Yeah, I can give you some of that.
I don't need the hours. I was just curious as to, there's direct instruction and as you go up, it's embedded?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Is that done? Mr. Llewellyn? Mrs. Lou McCormick, you get the last...
Yeah, last question. So you'd mentioned, once the implementation guides are done, it sounds like you're going to be doing a lot of stuff over the summer and the committees and stuff to take a look at the different apps and the protocols and this and that. So I guess my question is, is do we approve the curriculum prior to seeing what it is that we've put together to implement the curriculum?
Yes, we approve the curriculum as we have with other documents. We approve the curriculum and then once they know that is the approved curriculum, then they write the implementation guides.
So we won't have guidance on what the protocols or et cetera are prior to voting? I guess I find the, I understand the process now because I've seen this several times, and I guess it's kind of a, I guess, a question about our process because isn't it difficult to approve a curriculum without first fully seeing how the curriculum? Like, all the concepts are great, but these are kind of some important details that we've talked about that would be good to, I guess, have some color on before understanding, rolling, and funding, like the concepts behind how we're going to actually do it? Like, do we have a, like a plan or a rollout?
Yeah, we have a, the process we use is as I described it. Dr. Boyce, do you have a comment you wish to make?
A curriculum document will tell you what we want students to know and what we want students to be able to do. So when you approve a curriculum, you're saying, yes, this is what we want students to know and be able to do. And then it's our job to figure out how to do that, and that's the implementation of the curriculum.
Okay. And so we never really discuss that later? Do we review it, I guess? Do we review the success of the implementation? I guess we were going to discuss that at some point?
Yes, we review the success of the curriculum and in this year's budget book, one of the, I remind the board that in this year's budget book, Dr. Title will be putting in a page that not only says, here's how we review the curriculum, but then on a scheduled basis, this is how we evaluate that decision at some appropriate time. So you'll see, you'll see that schedule in this year's budget book.
Right, because I like the concept. Concepts are great, but then I would also like to see the practicality of, once the concept has been implemented, how is it effective? What have we found to be good, bad? What are we changing this year? Right.
Okay, thank you. First to the board members and then to Dr. Boyce, to relieve some of the pressure on the regular agenda in November, if I moved the library media curriculum to the November 12th date that we're currently looking at, does that work for everybody or does people, do people want to have more study time for that? I don't see any objections, so let me see if that's, seems to work or not. Mr. Fattabene.
I think because that November 12th date is a special meeting in the sense it's not part of our regular agenda, our regular scheduled meetings. I think it would be beneficial to the board to keep that meeting relatively short and therefore limit that agenda to what we have to discuss. So I would say I would caution whether, what else be put on that agenda?
Okay, thank you. And Dr. Boyce, if we did do that, could your staff make that date or...
Yes, we are available.
You're available.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll talk to Dr. Title and then we'll get back to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My wife was a library, library media person at Staples High School, so she, I have an affinity to your work. Onto item six, under Old Business, Discussion of Long Range Facilities Plan, and that is in your packet as enclosure number one.
I'll take it.
I presume Dr. Title will make some comments and then call on Mr. Cullen if questions require his assistance.
Well, he can come up and join me.
So he can come up to the table.
These are largely our library media folks who worked on this.
Thank you very much.
They weren't all here for other reasons. Thank you all for your work on this, just to show you the kind of faculty involvement and support we have in the curriculum development process.
Yeah, we probably should have. Didn't realize that.
Sure.
So, so...
No, they're not. They were teachers.
That's what we were saying. Oh, you were surprised. Oh, I see.
Yes. Those are our teachers.
We'll, we'll take a short pause so that people can leave and we can then still hear the discussion among ourselves. And while we're doing that, Mr. Rafferty, I am sorry that, I apologize for not welcoming you in your new role, and you have big shoes to fill.
Don't remind me.
I see that you don't, haven't come here with pumps or heels on.
Not that big a shoes.
But thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So we're on to the Long Range Facilities Plan and Waterfall Schedule, enclosure number one. I'll ask Dr. Title to lead us... I'll ask Dr. Tittle to lead us through it.
All right. We're not, we're not looking for action on this, but it would be helpful for us to get some direction from the board, even if you don't vote, because this is a, a living document that we have to continuously adjust. But what we want to be able to do is at least have the projects in the order you want them in so we can bring it to the town and say, you know, this is what we're looking at in terms of priorities and order. Will this fit with your waterfall schedule? As you know, some projects have to be moved because other projects get more expensive. Sometimes the town requests that we move something. But the biggest issue before you, and I will be right up front with this, I have no opinion on this. You're always wondering, you know, as a board, when do we get to make a decision? Why is it always your recommendation, right? Guess what? Here's your chance. Okay? There are two versions of this and the only difference between option A and option B is the placement on the second page of the two large elementary school projects. We think that both of these have approximately the same dollar value over the window of time we're looking at. So once we know generally where you want to be with this, we can then work from those numbers. So the only difference between option A and option B is on the second page of option A, you see the Mill Hill renovation in 1819 and the Holland Hill renovation in 2021. That's similar to the one you saw before. There's some other changes I'll review, but just so you can see that on the second page. If you go to option B, and these are only labeled A and B so I can sequence them, not that A is better than B or anything. I'm completely agnostic on this. You can make a, a very good case for either school. Option B has Holland Hill in 1819 and Mill Hill in 2021. We didn't adjust the pricing right now because we'll do that at some point when we finalize this, inflate or deflate depending on what year you put them in. So that's the only difference between A and B. We did have to make some other adjustments from the last time that you saw this because things keep changing. Right, Tom?
That's right.
Yes. So after doing some preventive maintenance work at Fairfield Woods Middle School, we now believe that we need to schedule a roof replacement for that project and that is in both A and B in 1718. The warranty expires in 2015 and once roofs start to go, they go reasonably quickly as we've learned from other roofs, since now I am a roof expert. So in order to accommodate that, we then moved out several other projects that are listed. I won't read them to you. The window project, the Jennings, Dwight. And then in order to accommodate the 10-year timeframe, we didn't eliminate the rest of the Osborne Hill renovation, but we moved it as to a future project. Osborne Hill's getting extensive funding now, but something had to get pushed off to beyond this, this timeframe. So that's the, those are the differences. This is going to be continuous work. I don't think this is something that necessarily is going to come back to you in November. I think this is something we're going to need to do some more work on. I don't think it'll end up on that agenda. But we do need some guidance, some thoughts. We still, no matter which way you want to go with this, we still have to check this with the town and it could result in further movement of the smaller projects. We would do everything we could to keep the large projects in place. Tom, do you want to add anything?
Oh, that's perfect.
Oh, I've done it again. You're there for the questions. Okay. Really, you can talk about it as long as you'd like.
Well, I'm not sure about that, but yes.
As long as you want.
Okay, Ms. Carnell and then Mr. Patton and then Mr. Fattabene and then Mr. Luellen.
Thank you. Can you, and I don't know who would know this, maybe you, Dr. Tittle. How many students are there in Mill Hill and how many students are there in Holland Hill today? And I know that changes.
Yeah, hold on. I happen to have a, I have a pink sheet here somewhere.
That's right.
All right. The current enrollment as of October 1st at Holland Hill is 407 and the current enrollment at Mill Hill is 413.
You sure about those? No, I'm joking, thank you. So it says addition and renovation. Have any preliminary drawings been even looked at or, I should say, done?
No. No drawings have been done, but the thought of the design was put into the construction estimates. So we know that the elementary level, the APRs are undersized, kitchens and cafeterias, expansion of those. We know from the MGT report in 2010 that there's building capacity deficiencies. We know what those are in every school. We know that we have a lot of things that are not up to code. Not all our schools are sprinkled, fire alarms up to date, mechanical means of fresh air and air conditioning. So those kinds of things we do know.
Right.
But no design drawings have been done.
Okay, so these numbers are really just looking at historically what it would cost for those things that you've listed?
And we also have included allowances for, what do we call it? Hazardous materials, how's that for the code word?
And, and roofs.
Right, but there is a, in the long range facilities plan itself, it's not on here, you can actually go project by project and each page has it broken down in some level of detail. So it wasn't just an estimate that we pulled out of the air, there was, you know, it was assigned. And the basis, as Tom pointed out, it's very important that we, if they get the elementary level, that we have this study that identifies all of the deficiencies of each elementary school. And so that becomes the basis for the cost estimate.
Okay, last question. I know that Mill Hill has portables. Does Holland Hill have any portables?
Yes, they have three.
They have three. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Patton?
Piggybacking off Ms. Carnell, on the capacities of both those schools at 407 and 413 currently, I'm guessing, especially with the portables, their, schools are over capacity, especially with the increase in students last couple of years. How much over are either of those schools? Ballpark?
Well, the Holland Hill building capacity, the existing building that sits there is 315 students, not including the portables. And Mill Hill's building capacity is 378 without the portables.
The only reason those buildings can function is because the portables are there.
Understood. And, and with the portables?
With the portables at Holland Hill, it's 399 and with the portables at Mill Hill, it's 483.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Yep, at Holland Hill, building capacity with the portables is 399 and Mill Hill's building capacity with the portables are 483.
Okay, and then I think you alluded to this, Dr. Tittle. Financially, you're saying you didn't, you didn't change the, the numbers, but just quick math, one of the, to follow the colors here. Holland Hill is the cheaper of the two?
No. Cheaper is not the word.
Well, not cheaper.
Yeah. Holland Hill is a less expensive project than Mill Hill.
Right, so one is, one is, again, to use round math, one is a nine-ish million and one is a 15 million?
10 and 15.
Give or take 10 and, okay.
Well, which one's 10?
Oh, Holland Hill will be the 10 and Mill Hill's the 15.
Right, so roughly a $5 million difference in moving stuff around. So I guess my basic question is, and since the projects are pretty much back to back no matter what you do them, what's the $5 million? If we do the more expensive one earlier or the cheaper one earlier, where's that $5 million, like what, what do we lose or gain? Do you have any idea?
Well, over the course of the timeframe here, there's no difference. Right, so if you look at the total, total dollars, it's, it's the same. The question is if you want them in a certain order, then when we bring it to the town, they might say, wait a minute, this year's overloaded because you've got this $15 million project in there. It may cause us to have to move around some of the other projects to make it fit. So I wouldn't want you to make the decision necessarily based on what is more expensive or less expensive, but certainly you could maybe do another smaller project sooner if you start in on the $10 million project before the 15. Because of the year you do the 15, you're really not going to be able to do a heck of a lot else. Right? Right? Well, not that's my point. You know, it spreads out over several years. Remember, the, the first year of the project, we spent relatively little money and then it builds over a couple of years from there. And that's reflected in the bottom part. That's what all the colors are. Right, that, that part I understood. So in other words, the, the, what we did not try to do, because that would have made it even more confusing, was to try to move all the other projects around to fit when it may be an area you don't even want. So this is really just to show you, you know, these are the two base designs. Let's put it another way. Once we know, you know, generally speaking, where you'd like us to go, we'd like to move it down to one design, bring that to the town and say, this is the design, what do we need to move around to make this work? And then I could bring it back to you and say, here's to make this work, here's what the town would, would need us to do. And so that's, that's how we envision this. So it could have an impact on some of these other smaller projects or roofs or windows and, and so forth, but the total dollars don't change in, over the 10-year timeframe.
Just quickly, through the chair to Mr. Cullen, is that, I guess that's why we're, we're talking about this tonight, but is there anything that you, you can, you have personally seen in looking at these two schools over the last few years in terms of needs and more immediate, you know, whether it's windows, roofs, you know, whatever, would there be any reason? Because they, they have about the same amount of portables, right? Mill Hill maybe has one, one more, they have four?
Mill Hill has five.
Five.
Holland Hill has three.
Three, okay. So would there be any logical safety reason or, or historical reason in terms of things needing to be replaced that one might need to be pushed? So they're pretty much dead even other than, right, they both need to get done. Okay.
We are taking no position on this. Fair enough. Mr. Cullen is taking no position on this. We've talked about this. If we had a firm recommendation on this, if we really felt that one should be somewhere and one should be other, believe me, I'm not shy about telling you, when I really say that you could make a logical argument for either one and this is a matter of priorities, that's really how we feel about it.
Finished, Mr. Fattabene?
As I looked at this, obviously every school has a need and every, most elementary schools have a need now, at least these are the few remaining ones left. And when I looked at this, you mentioned Mill Hill has five portables and one of our goals is to get rid of the portables.
Correct.
Holland Hill has three portables. So certainly by doing Mill Hill first would achieve the goal of getting rid of more portables be accomplished than Holland Hill at least. So you're achieving that goal. And as I looked at the facilities plan, according to the facilities plans, the program capacity deficiencies for Mill Hill is 11.5 rooms, whereas a program and capacity deficiencies at Holland Hill are nine rooms. So I think, I would make the argument that the Mill Hill would solve more ills of the district, both in deficiencies in rooms as well as portables, if that should be done first. They're only a year apart. Mill Hill is the more expensive of the renovations. That is a consideration, but it seems like we're going to spend what we're permitted to spend by the town on something so that we're not going to save any money by not spending it, we're just going to spend it at a different time. So I guess for those reasons, just try and be objective about this and looking at the needs of the district, I would advocate to do Mill Hill prior to Holland Hill. The other thing I would mention is that we in the district, it seems, have always had a, developed our educational specifications to be a 504 student school. If we renovate all our elementary schools to 504 student schools, I think we might be a little bit over capacity. So at some point, our renovations would have to then, I would think, to these elementary schools, change from the policy of having our educational specifications proposed and approved as a 504 student capacity. Now I'm not one, so I would say that in developing a cost for these elementary schools that are in need of renovation currently, the cost may not be as large as indicated because I would take a look at those educational specifications again and maybe make a decision not to have them to be a 504 student school because maybe based on projected enrollments, that may not be the most prudent thing to do. So those are my comments.
Thank you. And Mr. Luellen?
Thank you. So I was actually going to ask a similar question to Mr. Patton, which is, in terms of roof age, are they both similar? Does one need a roof sooner than the other? Because that seems to be the first thing to go.
No, they, well, Mill Hill just got a roof project done, a big portion of their roof just got done with a non-recurring project this past summer. But roof-wise, no, one doesn't stand in front of the other.
Okay. And then if, putting aside the two schools from it and looking at the, the overall long range facilities plan, my understanding is there's an overrun at the high school in the tune of like $3 million or so. Does that have any impact on this waterfall at all? And what is the size of that?
Right, so Ludlow, Ludlow looks like it's going to go over. It's still unclear what that number will be. The, the estimate, it could be that high, we suspect it's going to be lower, but until the bids come in, no one's going to really know for sure. And once we know, that's another reason why this is sort of dynamic. We'll probably have a much better handle on what that number is, January-ish timeframe. It could be that the building committee is going to need to go back to the town to get some additional funding to finish off the windows. They may need you to come in to get the project going, to temporarily revise some ed specs to make that happen so the town's purchasing process can happen, but that's a secondary discussion. Whatever that number ends up being, just pick a number out of there, let's say it's $2 million. Then what we need to do is slot that in here and then look at the ripple effect on the rest of it, which could impact more than likely, say, some of the smaller projects. But it could maybe help, you know, make a determination on the larger ones if you, if you wanted to. So, you know, just like we had to do with Osborne Hill, we thought that was an $800,000 window project. Turned out to be a big McGill. We thought Riverfield was what it was. And next thing you know, $2 million worth of PCVs later, we had to adjust it. So we're always adjusting this. So whenever we get the real, as close to a real number, because we don't even have any bids in yet on any phases of this project, once we have the real number for that project, then we would slot that in here and then we would build it in and adjust projects accordingly. And we would want to get that, again, that would be part of our work with the town to make sure it fits with their debt service schedule.
So it won't come back to this group to revise the ed specs to stay within budget instead? It'll be pushed back for more money?
I think it would, I think the, that's a discussion point going on right now. The building committee has to come up with a way to stay within their budget because they only have a certain amount of money. And, you know, certain parts of the plan are very time sensitive, specifically being able to expand the classrooms for the extra kids at Ludlow and the cafeteria. And work on that has to begin in December if it's going to be finished for next fall. So we've got to get contracts signed with the, when the bid comes in, we have to get a contract signed by, say, December 1st. So the building committee may at some point need to come back for more money, but basically under the town's purchasing regulations and Phil's had discussions with Mike on this and so forth, they're saying that unless the project has all of its funding in place, they won't sign a contract for any part of the funding, even though you've got enough funding for phase one and phase two. So an interim step maybe, and this is the building committee has still got to make a recommendation for us, to come back and say, you need to come back and amend what your ed specs say about the windows because that's going to get stretched out, that's going to need some more money, so that the town can then release the funds for the first two phases. So that's, we're trying to work through that right now. So it may require some action and if, if we can sort it out soon enough and it's perfunctory enough, that might be something that goes on that agenda for the, for the 12th so we can get it through, so the contracts can be signed.
So if I have the timeline right, we're at the end of October, we're going to be getting bids in in November and you're saying contracts need to be signed and construction started in December?
Contracts need to be signed by December 1st so they can do the work over December vacation, is really what it boils down to, for the expansion project. The roof work will happen in the summer. That's the one that's really the most time sensitive. So, yeah, the bids come in early November, then they need So, yeah, the bids come in early November, then they need to, you know, as long as they're awarded by December 1st, December 7th, somewhere in that range, then they can mobilize and get going in over Christmas break.
So once we've, so your recommendation, I think at this point, what I'm hearing is, we will go back to the town for more money for the windows as opposed to changing the cafeteria or the other ed specs?
Right. Because then we would never get that done. The roof has to get done, and the roof also has another benefit to it, which is that we've been awarded a solar grant.
Yep.
And once the new roof goes in place, this is for both high schools.
For both high schools.
Yes. We had a solar grant through the town that, once this roof goes in, we're going to put solar panels on, which will immediately save us a huge amount of money on electricity costs.
Photo will take cell panels.
Right. Starting like in the next budget. So for several reasons, we don't want to delay either one of those. But the building committee is going to come back to us with the recommendation. In other words, they've got to come back and say, here's how we would propose to do this. We think we're going to need approximately X dollars more, and then we'll build it into the waterfall. That's how it'll fit.
But do we need to go back to the town bodies before the December 1st? Because it sounds like, once we've started, that we've committed the extra $2 or $3 million.
No. Because if, here's the simplest form. The board amends the ed specs to take the windows out entirely. All right? Now the project has plenty of money. Problem to solve from the point of view of signing the contracts.
But is the problem solved in terms of, do we have requirements to change out the windows because of environmental issues?
Well, then, then we can go to the next step, which is, does the building committee, you know, the building committee is going to go forward probably to the town and say, we need X dollars, because you don't want to just leave the windows in place, because we've got requirements from the EPA to fix it.
We have options with the window bid, too.
Right.
They're going to bid it by window unit. So if the bids come in for the windows, and there's not enough to fund all of the windows, we could certainly do 90% of them or 80% of them, and then fund the remainder.
Right.
As another project.
We need some flexibility in the ed specs to get over this technical hurdle. And then you still have the problem of exactly how much more money do we need to finish off the project? And that will happen, that happens for the building committee. The board actually doesn't go ask for that. The building committee does that. That's exactly what happened with Riverfield. Riverfield found an overage. The building committee said, you know, you can do this now or do it later. We recommend you do it now. The town funded it, and on it went. Didn't come back here. So. I'm glad you asked that, because we needed to get into that. So I'm glad you got that.
Thank you.
Glad you got that out. Thank you for asking.
Anything else, Mr. Llewellyn?
I'm good, thanks.
Yep.
Who's next? Ms. Carnell, and, no, Donna, if I might, Mr. Confortito hasn't had a shot yet. Okay. Ms. Carnell, and then Mr. Confortito.
Thank you. Excuse me. One quick question and two quick questions, actually. How much square footage are we adding potentially to Mill Hill, and how much square footage potentially to Holland Hill?
I don't have the exact totals.
Okay. There's a $5 million, you know, difference. That's why I was...
We'd be looking certainly at the portables. If we remove five portables, we need five portables' worth of square footage added on versus Holland Hill that has three. But we have to look at the capacity deficiencies, which I'm glad Mr. Fattabine was looking at the facility book, because it really clearly identifies what the capacity deficiencies are at each school. Those will have to get looked at as though the space can be found in the existing school, whereas they add on the three classrooms at Holland Hill, they need to add on more square footage to pick up some of the deficiencies.
Right. So if you're taking away, we'll pick on Mill Hill for a second, because there's a reason. If you're taking away five portables, I would imagine you're going to have to build out on that space.
Mm-hmm.
So this is the question, and this is only because Mr. Fattabine and I were at the meeting. They're also contemplating in those 22 acres, putting in an existed living residence, budding Mill Hill. Those constructions can be going on simultaneously. Have you been in touch with whoever the powers that be to make sure that the streets are open and it's not totally closed to trucks doing renovation in two places?
I haven't specifically about that, but I do get in touch with the town about bridge construction. It's shutting down bridges for our bus transportations and some of the larger additions in housing that goes in, to see if it's going to affect it. But I haven't checked in on that unit.
I mean, again, I don't know if it's going to pass, but they're planning on a huge site being built there. And it's going to go right where you're talking about. So that streets are going to get really crowded, and that's your bus routes in and out of Mill Hill. So you may, I don't want to tell you how to do your job, but you don't want all that construction going on at one time.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Confortito.
Yeah, a couple of issues. And I guess I sort of look at this differently than Mr. Fattabine does. In the facilities report, you show the deficiencies on Mill Hill, which was done by the NGT report. I actually tried to find my old copy of the report, but I think I lost it in Hurricane Sandy, when my office was flooded. That was based on Mill Hill being upgraded to a 504. Okay? Projections for Mill Hill say we're going to be in 1718, 1819 at 379, which is what the interior capacity of that building is, less the science classrooms and so forth. Okay? It would seem to me that the higher need, okay, for space is at Holland Hill. And I know that there's five portables at Mill Hill, but with the declining enrollment projections there, which I, not that I'm a statistician, but knowing that the base number in 1415 is lower than what was projected, those numbers should trend even lower than what they're showing in this book. The configuration of the portables at Holland Hill are also further away from the building than they are at Mill Hill. Is that correct? They're about 20, 30 feet off the back of that building.
Yeah.
On the backside of that, used to be hardtop playground.
We are a few feet. I mean, not grossly further away, but...
But it would seem to me that the increasing need for space is Holland Hill, given that the trending for population is going down at Mill Hill, and some of those portables we could afford to abandon. So I would take the reverse take, and that, I would say that Mill Hill, or, excuse me, at Holland Hill is more in need of the renovation sooner rather than later. So that's my only comment.
Other questions or comments? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, Mr. Patton, Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I'd like to piggyback on what Mr. Confortito said, that I do agree that the need, that there is a greater need being demonstrated in the Holland Hill district. And I say that for a number of reasons. Again, the numbers don't lie in terms of where this population is going. I also have a great deal of faith in the group, back when there was an actual facilities subcommittee of this board, and they put in the work in that 2011-2015 facilities report, where all they did was, in addition to redistricting, they worked on the facilities, and they had that time devoted to an examination of the needs of the district. And that clear recommendation at that time was that Holland Hill be handled first, and I don't see how anything is any different from then. So one, the work, and correct me if I'm wrong, that Mr. Carey, Mr. Mottola, and Mr. Lou did in coming up with that recommendation, I see no reason to be swayed away from that. And secondly, I look at Holland Hill, and I think, where else, if these numbers go in this trend, where we are clearly about to go past not only bricks and mortar capacity at Holland Hill, but the portable capacity at Holland Hill, that, to me, is a very compelling case. And I see no reason why we should, again, change course from what had previously been said. Willingly set up a situation where we are putting art on a cart, or, as we had to do at Stratfield, put art in a corner of the cafeteria, going on while lunch is going on, you know, next music on a cart. There's a reason Holland Hill was prioritized first. And again, I just, I agree with everyone in that we want to get rid of the portables for safety issues, educational issues, et cetera. But the point being, the trend that Mill Hill is on, as Mr. Confortito pointed out, very shortly, they will be at their bricks and mortar capacity. And I actually don't understand the continued need for five portables. Not that any school can't always find space. And last point, because we will be asked this by the town, that if we're looking at expanding a school, and it came up when we were talking about Ludlow and Ward a few years ago, is that what other place could these children be put? Is it always necessary to expand the building? And if you look at where Holland Hill is located, if that number continues to rise, such that it is, we are actually doing a disservice to the education that they receive by attempting to keep them in that school, to look elsewhere, look at what surrounds them. Osborne Hill, not known for being underpopulated. Sherman, not known for being underpopulated. McKinley, for only the first time, below expectation. And the town will ask us, why Mill Hill first, when in fact, and I am not looking to do this, but if we were to prioritize Mill Hill first, what would stop anyone from saying, is there room at Dwight? Is there room at Burr? And how can we responsibly say no? We must keep the building as is, build there so those kids can stay there, which is, of course, where I want them to stay. But we're looking at a trend where they can stay. Holland Hill, that's not the case. And I just don't see how we can change the course set by that facilities plan. I think it was wisely created, and we are wise to stick to it.
Thank you. Mr. Patton?
Piggybacking on Ms. Maxon Cannelly, and I guess Mr. Confortito as well. And again, still playing devil's advocate here. So just using the numbers that we have, Holland Hill, without the portables, is 92 students currently, 92 students over capacity, eight over capacity with the portables. And Mill Hill is, where is it? Here. With the portables, it's 70 students under capacity, which means there technically would, should be extra room there, 25 students over capacity if there were no portables. So I have one question. I don't know who to direct this to, Mr. Dwyer, but if Mill Hill is only 25 students over capacity...
35.
35?
35.
Okay. Still, it's roughly one and a half, two classrooms' worth of people, but yet we have five portables there. I would assume we are using all five portables?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. And I know there's certainly all sorts of other things that are in that facilities plan that Mr. Fattabine and Mr. Confortito were referencing, in terms of the needs of both those schools, other than just actual space. So my first question is, at Mill Hill, is there, am I missing some, something as to, you know, we have five portables there, but we don't seem to be that much over capacity? So how is...
Why aren't they back in my...
Yeah, exactly.
Well, wherever they can be put back in the building, they are. The preference of the principals is clearly to have as many of the regular classes as possible in the bricks and mortar building. A lot of times, the portables are used for specials, for the music, you know, that sort of thing. So they're still used as instructional spaces, but they may not all be being used for regular classrooms. They may be used for the, you know, gifted program, they may be used for small group instruction, they may be used for a number of others. At the same time, you have to remember, this is more than, it's really not, it's not just designed to, we're not trying to increase the capacity so much as we're trying to eliminate the portables and then build bricks and mortar what we need, but at the same time, there's a whole other list of deficiencies.
Right. And that I understand.
We talked about the air, the size of the APRs, the hazardous materials. These buildings are in line, you know, for that kind of work. So it's more than, you know, capacity is one element of this, but there's a much bigger picture to what the needs are at that school, other than simply replacing the portables. And is it possible that, when we look at this in terms of a Mill Hill, that, you know, the board could decide in the ed specs not to build this as a 504 school? And that certainly, you know, would be within your jurisdiction to do that. And that would bring the price down a little bit. But that's another decision for another day. And so I, yeah, the capacity's funny, but basically, we've got two schools that both, quite frankly, could use a renovation next year. We just can't do that because of the financing. And it's more than just trying to do the numbers and the capacity, but that is a factor.
So all those things considered, understood?
It's complicated.
Right. So I guess it's just, you know, trying to make this as apples, you know, apples to apples as possible in terms of, again, is there a reason why one school should go above the other? You've stated that you and Tom don't, you're staying out of it, it's pretty even to you. And I guess the good news is, is within a four- to five-year period, if the money is approved by the town bodies, both schools will be done. So, you know, either way, it's, you know, both schools should have their improvements done within a reasonable amount of time. So just to put one before the other, it just seems that possibly, and I guess I'm looking for the answer as to why or why not, that maybe we could kind of stop the use of at least two or three of the portables at Mill Hill in the short term, seeing as how it seems that space does exist. And I guess I'm looking for the answer of, if we're using them all, then maybe space doesn't exist, and I don't know. I'm looking for a why.
And some of these could be questions that the staff have to research, so that the next time this comes back to us, they ask whether they really still need five there or not.
So maybe, I mean, it just, not that I want to volunteer to have Tom do more work, but I guess I'm going to maybe do that with the principals. I think it would be helpful for us to perhaps lay out the current usage, sort of like a floor plan, current usage of each, of each school as it currently exists, and what the current level of deficiencies appears to be, forgetting about the projections, just looking at, you know, here's the use, here's often they're used. I know that you've received some emails about, you know, Holland Hill's, you know, pretty close, we're worried about this, and Mill Hill's got some concerns, obviously, as well. Because if you look at the deficiency study that is referenced, it was done in December of 2010. That was based on the current enrollment in those schools in 2010. So some things may have changed. So perhaps if we were able to get you a little more information, it might help you make this decision in terms of the current usage, so you maybe have a little more up-to-date information, if you'd find that helpful.
Absolutely. And certainly, nobody wants art on a cart, so, or science for that matter.
I mean, because I don't know how, you know, it's hard to talk about it a bit in a vacuum. And also, at some point, if the board wanted to tour both those schools, they could arrange for that as well. So, you know, again, this is not necessarily a decision that has to be made in the next month. I just think that, we're talking about a long-range plan, we've got some other pieces to fit in, but at some point, we need to go with one version. And at this point, I don't want to force you into making a premature decision, I just want to sort of lay it out.
And it's not up for a vote tonight, but we're, you know, some people have given you a sense of where they are. Mr. Patton, you're done. So Mrs. Lou McCormick, I think, was next. Do you have a comment? And then Ms. Carnell.
Yeah. And kind of in line with Mr. Patton's aligning the different numbers and the capacity question and the renovations that you were saying that go beyond just capacity issues, I guess I'm curious why the Mill Hill renovation is $15 million, like, you know, so much more than the Holland Hill. And then, you had mentioned before that you actually had contemplated the declining population in the 15 million. So that just seems baffling to me, unless these are both just based on 504 students, regardless of actual need, and then there are just terrain complications or what have you that might make it. Right? So I'm not really understanding...
Yeah, Mill Hill definitely will have constraints as far as where the addition goes, because of the large hill that drops down to the playground. But we looked at both schools being a 504 capacity. We looked at the capacity deficiencies. There's more deficiencies at Mill Hill than there are at Holland Hill. So the square footage would be greater.
So when you come back to us next time, could you, as we mentioned, give us the list of deficiencies? Because if in fact...
We can update that.
The Mill Hill building is falling apart under the kids' feet, then perhaps that is a more urgent need. And given the lower population need, maybe the number really isn't as big as 15 million. Maybe it's more like 10 million, because we don't really need a 504. Maybe we need a 450 or something.
There was a hazardous materials addition we made to that. That was part of it. This project was, after we did Riverfield...
Yep. Based on Riverfield...
Based on Riverfield, age of the building, the chlorine scans, the whole thing.
We know where the asbestos is, lead paint, but we didn't know PCB constraints.
But in fact, if the population is declining, that could help defray some of the costs, because maybe we really don't need such overcapacity within the building itself.
Really depends where the addition would go on the building and how much of the PCB study would have to be done.
So it would kind of be good to get that laid out, you know, just so we can understand that. Because again, if the needs of Mill Hill are dire, then maybe we want to accelerate that and maybe the cost issue of being able to fit in the other projects with a lower project, maybe that can be helped by contemplating the population reduction that's going on there. So, if we could get scenarios, that'd be great.
Sure. I'd be more worried that the Holland Hill number's too low. We're yet to bring a project forward that's under.
So, that can, we can move on to other agenda items, Ms. Carnell, and is that it?
Yep, quick comment.
And Mr. Lou Allen, back again.
Just a quick question. I know we've talked about the projections of going down for the Mill Hill enrollment. When you take that into consideration, and I don't know what company produces those, but do they take into consideration all the renovation and construction of new houses going on in Mill Hill?
Yes, they do. They did. It's MGT of America, that's the company. It's the same company that's been doing our projections since they got the bid in 2010. Mrs. Parks and I meet with them on the phone, we update them. They actually came to the district this time to do the 10-year enrollment, and they went over to the town and they looked at where the buildings were going, and we pointed this one out, they drove over to see it. And so, they baked that into their numbers. But it's interesting, their perspective on it was, you know, it looks like a big deal to you because it's like the only thing going on in town of that size. If you take 20 houses and put two kids in a house, spread it out over 15 years' worth of school, you know, you're maybe talking about, you know, how many total kids really are coming out of there. It's not as gigantic an impact as you would, as you would think. So, there, they did take it into consideration, but, you know, that's, it's not really moving the needle that much.
Well, I mean, to your point, and since this survey's been done, there's been at least 16 new projects going up and then houses have gone up. And then, you have that cul-de-sac that we were talking about the other day, which I'm not even sure. Now, I don't know, there could be equally amount of renovation going up in Holland Hill, but I don't know, is there?
Not as much as Mill Hill shows.
Holland Hill is turnover of the housing stock.
Right. I was gonna say, I didn't think the renovation.
Yeah, there's not, there's not a lot of building in the Holland Hill area, but what appears to be happening there is there's a lot of sales and your turnover and getting kids moving in where there were older folks with no kids.
That's what I had a feeling. But I think that should seriously be taken into consideration. There is so much renovation going on in the Mill Hill School District. And to Mr. Patton, it's beyond capacity. Every inch is used at Mill Hill.
Thank you. Ms. Lu, from my, Ms. Lu...
I said, well, the numbers don't...
I find from my note that I should have asked you in ahead of Mrs. Carnell, so my apologies. Mr. Lou Allen?
Just two quick comments. Back to the MGT report that was recently released. The district has three schools with on or about 100 in excess capacity. Burr's at 83. If you look at the maximum, the maximum kind of usage over the 10-year period and say that that's gonna be the high point, there are 83 extra spaces at Burr, 109 at Dwight, and 106 at Riverfield when they're done their, their renovation, leaving the district with 272 or 5% excess capacity. Just to point that out. And I think the other thing to point out here is, we're talking about scheduling something when the town's pretty dynamic, and we're not gonna actually need to make a decision for a couple of years. So, whatever goes into this can be flipped again because it doesn't even matter.
Right. We just kind of owe an update to the plan. And as you've seen already, plan changes almost annually. But we do try to keep the big projects in some alignment, and we have to keep, just so you know, we have to keep these big projects two years apart because of the cash flow. You can't say, well, let's do them, you know, one after the other would really bind the town when you're trying to do major construction of the two sites. That's why they're laid out two years apart.
This, of course, will come back onto the agenda for further discussion. I'll add my commentary to Mr. Confortito and Mrs. Max and Cannelly, that I won't repeat their comments, but I do pay honor to the prior board who debated this a lot, as Mr. Fattabean remembers. And in terms of the placement that they placed for one building over the other, my preference is Holland Hill first, but we will continue to look at this and see where we stand. Any other comments that people want to make that would be giving guidance to Dr. Tidal and staff?
We'll come back with some more information.
We'll come back, okay? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. So, we'll, we'll come back with some more information on both those schools and help you along. Okay.
If, yeah, I took notes in terms of what questions board members asked, so hopefully we'll address those, but if there's something that you think in the meantime, get it to Dr. Tidal. New business. See, now, I know that Mrs. Max and Cannelly were hoping that the other half of the room would leave because of their excitement over the long-range plan. But I, that doesn't seem to be the case. So, so, first reading of policy 5516. As I remind the members of the public, we do all policies and really business with a first reading, a presentation, and then we consider this at the next regular meeting. So...
Or not.
Or not, depending on the discussion we have tonight. Ms. Max and Cannelly, you're on.
It's been my custom in the past when bringing a new policy before the board, that I give the briefest of introductions and then just encourage you to read it and get me questions. That will not be the case this time. I have a fairly extensive opening statement to make in terms of placing this in its context, the work that we did, why we did what we did, information for both the board and the public, many of whom have been with us every step of the way. And so, beginning in February of this year, the policy committee, Mrs. Carnell, Mr. Confortito and myself, embarked on its first discussion of an updated life-threatening food allergy and glycogen storage disease policy that we then researched and worked to create a new version. As you can see, the previous version was a paragraph. Let me clarify the two reasons that we did this. First, our current policy was written in 2004. 10 years is enough time to pass for any policy to need updating. In this case, the passage of a Connecticut state statute, first in 2006 and then amended in 2012, set in motion the process of requiring the board to implement a district-wide plan that conformed with the state guidelines, published here, for managing students with life-threatening food allergies and glycogen storage disease. The second reason we looked to update the policy was a direct request from the Central Office Administration. Principals at the school were seeking more clear direction from Board of Ed policy on how they should handle what was a growing issue in their classrooms, students with life-threatening allergies, and how to ensure their full participation with safe access to their education as required by federal law. I will say that in the beginning, speaking for myself, I was a bit skeptical as to the extent of the issue. I certainly had no grasp of how challenging this task was going to be. I thought, shouldn't, excuse me, shouldn't children with allergies just be taught to eat only the food provided by their parents? And therefore, why should this policy impact non-allergic children? It is the committee's hope that you will have a much better understanding of this five or so minutes from now. So, how did three volunteer policy committee members create what you have before you today? I think it would be easiest to review from the perspective of what did Connecticut state law require us to address. For those of you who would enjoy some soothing bedtime reading, please refer to Section 10-212C. The work of this committee focused on creating the plan to be implemented, a plan again which was required to be based on the state guidelines. The first requirement is for the plan to include, and I quote, "education and training for school personnel on the management of students with life-threatening food allergies and glycogen storage disease, including training related to the administration of medication with a cartridge injector." This board, or this committee has addressed, excuse me, this board has addressed the second part of this requirement regarding medication administration with our recently passed policy 5515, which this policy references in Section 4B. The education and training component is covered in this policy under Sections 2F and Section 4. The second requirement is for the plan to include, and again, I quote, "procedures for responding to life-threatening allergic reactions to food." This policy addresses that in Sections 1B3 and Section 4, as well as Section 2D and G, where you can look for references specifically to the emergency care plan. The third requirement is for the plan to include, and I quote, "a process for the development of individualized health care and food allergy action plans for every student with a life-threatening food allergy." This policy addresses this in Sections 1, 2, and 3. The fourth requirement of the state statute is for the plan to include, I quote, and I'll warn you that this is a long one, "a process for the development of individualized health care and glycogen storage disease action plans for every student with glycogen storage disease, and such plans shall include but not be limited to the provision of food or dietary supplements by the school nurse or any school employee approved by the school nurse to a student with glycogen storage disease, provided such plan shall not prohibit a parent or guardian, or a person designated by such parent or guardian to provide food or dietary supplements to a student with glycogen storage disease on school grounds during the school day. You will note that this policy references that requirement verbatim in Section 2F." The fifth requirement for this plan includes, and again, I quote, "protocols to prevent exposure to food allergens." This requirement is entirely focused on the school and its responsibilities. We address this in the goals of a student's individualized health care plan, in the potential need for a 504 plan as determined by the IHCP team, and in Section 5 on prevention. Please note that the requirement by state statute does not indicate protocols to limit exposure. The goal is to prevent the exposure. Finally, Sections 6 and Section 7 fulfill the final communication requirements of the state statute. This is about student safety and the equal access of all students to the education that Fairfield School District offers. It has never been about anything different. Some allergy facts. There is no cure for food allergies. Food allergies are in fact on the rise. In fact, in some publications, it's referenced as an epidemic. Between 1997 and 2002, the prevalence, for example, of peanut allergies in children doubled. The current national average for children diagnosed with a life-threatening food allergy is 5 to 8%. Fairfield's 2013-14 numbers were just under this. Of just as great a concern is the fact that 25% of severe allergic reactions experienced at school are among children having no previous diagnosis of a food allergy. Food allergies is the only disability which relies on compliance from others to ensure safe and equal access to the environment in which the law requires a child to be. For those children at risk for food-induced anaphylaxis, strict avoidance of the allergen is the only way to prevent a reaction. In a Massachusetts study of the use of an EpiPen due to a student allergic reaction, 45% of the time, it was due to exposure in the classroom. Every food allergy reaction has the potential of developing into a life-threatening event, regardless of previous reactions. In addition, Fairfield already has a wellness policy which presents an expectation of healthy snack choice. This policy change would be entirely consistent with that. Let me please take one minute, finally, to address some of the most common comments that you have been reading in your Board of Ed emails. I should add that the committee was very grateful for these emails, as well as for the attendance of so many parents at our policy meetings throughout this process, as they both reminded us of considerations we had perhaps not considered, as well as further educate us about the difficulties so many parents have encountered in our schools, as the schools have grappled how best to ensure this safe and inclusive access to education that we are required to offer. Some of these concerns in no particular order. First, no one is under any illusion that the risk in our schools will ever be zero. And so, I very much refute the sense of the false sense of security. I have not met one parent who's spoken to me about what they've grappled with in a school, who has said, "Thank you for this policy, I know I never need to worry again." Second, while the Connecticut guidelines do not recommend the banning of food schoolwide for fear of safety protocols being relaxed, these guidelines do in fact explicitly reference, and I quote, "that school options may include establishing allergen-free zones such as a child's individual classroom." When you consider that Fairfield has almost, I left my number out, has almost between 250 and 300 elementary school students with a life-threatening allergy, this averages out to approximately one to two diagnosed students per classroom. It therefore seems logical that we need to implement a district-wide, consistent food-in-the-classroom policy and not leave it to the work of potentially almost 300 504 teams. Past allergic reactions are not an indication of a future reaction. Just because a student only had hives as a reaction does not mean that hives will be the consistent symptom. Next, Central Office has advised us that the budget impact of this policy, if approved, would be minimal. No, I do not, neither I nor they have a more definitive number at this time, but the elementary schools are already purchasing the hand wipes as part of their general practice, and the cost of the alternative snack for non-compliant students is also not expected to be significant. It has been argued that mandating such a list is too divisive. I'm not sure how much we as a board can take that into consideration. Our obligation, our legal obligation as a board is to prevent the exposure to allergens as best we can to ensure safe and equal access to the education for all students. The committee wholeheartedly agrees that education is the most vital component in our hopes to safeguard the educational environment. But in fact, we have no place in mandating or ensuring parent education, as much as we might try to do so, and our schools are asking the board for direction in the instances, for example, when we have parent non-compliance, when parents, either deliberately or probably more often out of ignorance, send food into the primary learning environment, which literally endangers the health and life of another student. We would have preferred to remove food from the classroom altogether, that was one of our proposals, but we were told it simply wasn't feasible to have the snack offered in another setting. Finally, you have heard a lot about the importance of children learning to advocate for themselves. We absolutely agree that this is a vital component to preparing these students to live in the real world post-graduation. But first, students have to be prepared to handle, excuse me, students are prepared to handle self-advocacy at very different points in their development. Certainly, it can be surmised that many of our youngest students are not fully equipped to do so. It also bears repeating that when allergists and the Connecticut guidelines reference self-advocacy, it's a phrase that's being used a lot and not necessarily correctly. Here's the actual intent of the statement, self-advocacy. The carrying, not necessarily administering of their own medication, knowing how to read food labels, not sharing food, knowing signs of anaphylaxis, and seeking help if having a reaction. What is not included in this expectation of self-advocacy? The kindergartner having to tell a neighboring best friend that what he is eating could cause her to stop breathing. What is not included? A first grader rubbing his eyes after a long day, and also having, after having touched a desk with peanut oil on it and going into anaphylactic shock. I'm not citing these for shock value. I'm citing a reality with which these children live day in and day out. The policy committee has worked for months to ensure that the policy we brought before you was rooted in evidence, national and state guidelines, and best practices. And at this time, we welcome your questions.
And I remind the board, thank you very much. I know the committee has done a lot of work in this area. I remind the board that at this point, we try to ask clarifying questions, and of course, the debate, pros and cons, happens when the meeting, when the policy is up for vote. Any questions for the chair? Mr. Patton?
Through the chair to Ms. Max and Cannelly. I was gonna say, to address the elephant in the room, it's not really the elephant in the room because everybody knows what it is, but the one subject that has come up through all the parent emails and advocacy over the last month or so is the food list that the policy currently states would be adjusted or created every year. I know the committee weighed both sides of the equation back and forth, so I guess my first question is, the state doesn't require us to have lists, correct?
Correct.
Have the, maybe this is to, through the chair to Dr. Tidal, does the administration or the principals, have they expressed interest in requiring or wanting such lists? You don't know? Okay.
Well, I can speak to what... Well, I can speak to what they have said at our meetings. When they've come to our meetings, what they've asked for, they are seeking to be consistent with each other, they are seeking a consistent, strong guidance from the Board of Ed policy. I assure you, we have asked and asked, does somebody have a better idea of how we can ensure the safe and inclusive environment that we are required to provide? We're not getting any other better ideas. I would love to rely on trust. I would give you this example. Is there anybody in this room who is not aware of the dangers of smoking? No hands, not a surprise. Why? Because for decades, we have focused in this culture on teaching that, and yet ultimately, despite the known risks of it to yourself, despite the known risks of smoking via second-hand smoke, people continue to smoke, such that we have had to pass legislation for adults forbidding it, for example, from the workplace. Why? Because a choice you make endangers my life. And that's only in a secondary nature, unlike a food, unlike an allergen. So yes, there's no question that this is an aggressive step, but I challenge anyone, and the committee at no point in time was racing around saying, "Yes, we want this list." We attempted to form it ourselves. That didn't go well, and that was again where the, you know, the emails were invaluable for reminding us of many cautions with that. But if you, again, look at the requirement that we are supposed to be, and I would like to read it so that I am not misquoted, that we are to create protocols to prevent exposures to food allergens. We were not qualified to make such a list, which was our whole point. Notice, there are no stipulations about what is on that list. For all I know, the list is going to come out saying, "You can allow anything you want but Reese's Peanut Butter Cups." I don't know. But we are not allergists, we are not medical professionals. I don't know about if they have children or not who have these types of allergies to deal with, but we know that it was beyond us, so that we are asking that a district team take this issue up, that they can come up with something where they can factor in from a variety of stakeholders, how can this actually be evidenced in practice?
Another question, Mr. Patton?
Well, I guess more of a comment. All of what you said is understood, and I think the parents, you know, who have been sending us all these emails, also understand that sort of thing. I think the problem with any kind of list is that, you know, throwing out an example, you could have a classroom where hypothetically you could have a child with nut or peanut allergies, a child with airborne dairy allergies, and like my older daughter, allergies to certain fruits like strawberries, where just about literally, there's not, there's almost no foods that that particular classroom could have. So there's no list that's going to be comprehensive to every situation, unless we created, you know, 50 lists, or the Department of Health for the town or the state had 50 different lists, is if you have X, then this use List A. If you have Y, then use List B. And I think that would be, I mean, for the principals and the administrators, I think that would be an administrative nightmare. So I think what the Policy Committee has done and turned out and released to us is amazing. I think it's, you know, very, very comprehensive. I looked at, you know, what a couple of other towns did, and this is certainly beyond what those towns have done in the last year or so, but if there's any way that, and again, I guess this is, you know, maybe a health question for the Department of Health for the town, which I don't know, we don't have any representatives here on this, maybe we could have one at the next meeting. What are the options without having to create or provide lists? I mean, whether we create them or give them out or whatnot. I mean, I know the lists aren't in here, but if we're saying lists will be created, I guess that's the issue that seems to be everybody has concerns about.
And so, because of the other items we have on the agenda, and this was expected to be a presentation, gather facts, I think what you've asked is, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, kind of come back with, what's the response to that, if you will?
Or if the Chair or Dr. Title could maybe have, is the Department of Health for Fairfield? How does that?
It's the Board of Health, is what it's called.
Oh, great. So if we either could get a representative or get that question answered?
She'll take that under advisement. Mr. Llewellyn, followed by Mrs. Gerber, followed by Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Two quick questions. First of all, I actually thank you, the committee and all the parents, because I know this was more than a small exercise, not contentious at all either. Is the current policy that we have on the books in compliance with state statute, or must something be adopted in order to bring us into compliance?
Thank you for asking, and this I do need to answer. While our Board of Ed policy is not, what the district did is that they put into place administrative regs to make sure that the district was in compliance. So they sort of did our job for us to a degree, which we're now addressing in a more comprehensive fashion. That said, we do absolutely believe we must have a policy that regs are not sufficient. We must have the policy that is in compliance. So should this board vote down the policy, I promise you would not get away with a simple no vote. It would be with very explicit direction on what you wanted to have changed, and that we in policy would have to then take a look specifically at those areas and only those areas, and we would be bringing it right back again. We need to have a Board of Ed policy that is in compliance, not rely just on the administrative regs.
But we frequently look at policy plus regulations to say, are we in compliance? You do have to look at both. And so between the two of them, the answer would be yes, correct?
My next question is, do you have any idea where the lists that were circulated, like, you know, we can only bring in Oreos, Doritos, and no fruit? That doesn't sound like that's actually in here anywhere.
That was our late August, early September attempt at being allergists, which we did, and keeping in mind, because obviously that absolutely raised alarms. Number one, let me be very clear, fruit and vegetables was never not part of it. Due to an error at some point in time, it literally got just left off the policy. That was never even an option. We were never considering not having fruits and vegetables. So thank you for giving me the chance to say that. Regarding the other things, unlike when your students, your children are writing papers and your teacher gets to see the final draft of a paper, all of our work has to be in public. And so oftentimes, we are trying out ideas, and this was an idea we trotted out, we talked about a little bit, we committed it to paper to continue the discussion the next time, and that is what gave rise, you know, it was a misquoted policy. It wasn't good, it wasn't good writing to begin with, and the evidence for that is that we ultimately eliminated it. It being misquoted did not help, and then the clerical error of no fruits and vegetables further didn't help the matter. But that's where, some of those emails came out of a policy that we're not even considering. One other thing I should add, that when, and I think this might have been something I should have talked about with Dr. Parks, where safe snack list is capitalized within the current policy, makes it sound like it's an, you know, proper noun, that it's an official thing. Now, that, we have no idea what is on that. It's that we want to charge the stakeholders and medical professionals with coming up with something, and so it really shouldn't have been capitalized.
Thank you. Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, first of all, thank you so much to the Policy Committee. I know this has been a very long and difficult road, and I really appreciate all the work that has been done on this, because it obviously needed to be done. I had two questions, and one that was kind of addressed already. I did look at a few other districts in the area, and some of them have very brief policies, but very extensive administrative regulations. And I was just wondering, did we consciously choose to go in this direction? Why would some districts do it one way and others do it another? I just wasn't clear, I'm still not completely clear, you know, the differences. I know we have some that have more extensive than others, and I just was curious to see how that was decision, how that decision was arrived upon.
Should I answer that now? Is that okay?
Or I can, I don't need to know right this second.
Well, just very, very briefly. First, a lot of surrounding districts actually are not in compliance yet. If you, you know, take the hard line of their board policy, they haven't been revisited. I can think of a Fairfield County district, I believe, hasn't been done since the year 2000.
Weston.
Yeah, I was naming, but, but in addition to that, what's, and as Mrs. Leonardi mentioned at our last policy meeting, this is a topic that districts are, I don't want to say frantically, I'm not about to ascribe an adverb to somebody, but everyone is asking everybody else, what are you doing? I used the word epidemic earlier, and this is that, in terms of, it is a growing issue. As I said, Fairfield, one to two children diagnosed in our elementary school classrooms with this, and everyone is trying to figure out what to do. It's very much like our student internet use policy, where we're a little bit ahead of the curve on that, but we were trying to anticipate the future. This is not a health issue that is going away, this is not a disability that is going away, and we can anticipate that it is getting worse. So all districts are struggling, and thus, there's no consistency from one to the other.
I'll give a quick comment as well. For probably 100 years, people have debated, shall we have a general policy statement and then fill in the gaps with regulations, because policy statements take longer to fix, but the administration can get a memo from the Department of Health and change the regulations immediately. So some districts choose to go that way. Brief policy statements put most of it in regulations. Others choose a different method. Do you have another question?
Yeah, just, I know in the section talking about the list, when you talk about the district-wide multidisciplinary team, would there be some way to, you know, get, I know that we had discussed that offline, but just in terms of, you know, people have been asking, well, who is this group? What are they doing? What is this group going to consist of? I just think it would be helpful, not now, but before the next meeting, to have that information so that people can understand, because the list is such a source of interest, that if people understood who was formulating the list, it might give some clarity to that issue. So, thank you.
Mrs. Lou McCormick?
Yeah. My question is, is this pertaining only to life-threatening allergies, or is this to all allergies, this food in elementary schools?
Life-threatening.
Life-threatening only? So it would pertain to somebody who was just allergic to strawberries or just allergic to gluten?
For example, oral allergy syndrome is not considered, is not life-threatening.
Right.
So that would not be covered under this.
Okay. So, okay, that's good. And then the next one is, can parents opt their children out of this protocol? Or are we required to, whether the parent feels that their child is capable or not, you know, force the protocol? If that makes sense? Because, for example, you know, someone mentioned that, you know, their child had multiple allergies, but the one that was most concerned was nut, even though they were also allergic to, you know, a couple of other things which are life-threatening also, but that was not as, I guess, high risk in their minds, because you had to actually ingest it versus just touching it, or, you know, something that was later.
Right. I'll get started, and then Mr. Convertito is going to follow up. Two issues regarding that. Number one, there's a general section that we have here on page three, which is for noncooperation. That's not quite what you're referencing, because this is going back, you know, forget about opting out, they're not even pursuing the health, the issue of their child's health regarding allergies at all. So just on that topic, we do have that section. Secondly, the notion of opting out isn't something we had actually talked about in committee, but, Mr. Convertito?
Yeah, I mean, opting, I mean, I understand the example that you're giving, and that would be taken care of either in the 504 or the emergency care plan for that child, okay? It's not so much an opting out as to what is to be done if certain things happen, okay? And an IHCP. So there's many different levels to this. But as, like, an opt-out or signing a waiver, no, you couldn't do that. It would have to be documented in their individual healthcare plan as to what they want addressed and how they want it addressed, and how it would be addressed in the 504, if there was a 504, assuming there's a life-threatening allergy, and the parents choose to go that route. So there's not really an opt-out, but the parents have to approve those plans, so that would be up to them.
So whether the parent feels comfortable or not with their child's ability to cope with a particular allergy, the whole classroom or the whole school particularly could be subject to the protocol to keep that school or classroom free from that allergen, even though the parent believes that that child may be capable of existing in, within an allergen-contaminated environment?
Right. There is no school that has one child with a life-threatening allergy. I mean, that's part of the, if that were the case, we wouldn't be having this conversation. Again, we're averaging one and a half children per classroom with a life-threatening allergy. So part of the idea of this was to be more comprehensive. I mean, you talk about setting a child apart, well, that has to be the classroom with, oh, that's the classroom that has a child with the nut allergy, so they have the restrictions, whereas the other classroom, they get to have whatever they want. Imagine the dynamic that sets up. Whereas if you make it consistent across the district, and you teach it from the perspective also of being healthy, which was one of the most important concerns parents raised in their emails, in terms of making sure that this is, you know, meeting national mandates in terms of health levels, that that's important, that this is not just a processed food list. So I don't see how one parent, even, even though that, I don't see that as being possible, even if you had one parent say, "I don't want this to apply," the idea is, the school is buying into this.
But I'm just talking about multiple allergens. So does this mean that if we have six different allergens across the district, that all of our schools would have to be covered for all six of them?
What you're getting into is exactly what we realized after many months, we were under no circumstances qualified to do, to be blunt about it. We recognize the need to attempt to keep allergens out of the classroom, knowing we cannot guarantee such a state, but when a known threat enters the classroom, the peanut butter cup, the trail mix, that is a known threat, that we can do something about minimizing that allergen exposure and ensuring an allergen-free, primary learning environment.
So this is by classroom and not necessarily meant to be by school or by district for a particular child's allergies?
The idea here, and again, we don't know what that district team is going to come up with as a list. I gave the sort of silly example that they could come out saying, "You can have anything you want except Reese's Peanut Butter Cups." We just knew we weren't qualified to make such a list, that we needed to have professionals, we needed to have an allergist come and consult with us to do that. And even then, that was not a decision for the three of us. We needed an administrator who would be there, teachers who would be there enforcing this, to have some say in what this process would be, and what would be this list, so that their concerns about enforceability would be addressed. This was something that the three of us were, while we could do everything else and felt comfortable, and we recognized that we have a statutory obligation to fulfill that idea of preventing allergen exposure, what that list is going to look like, we simply don't know. But that said, I do want to keep everyone in mind, because you obviously mentioned the parent who spoke, who has many, many allergies, and that's not the only story such as that that we've heard. There is always, if our list does not address a specific health need, there is the 504 plan. Now, we're actually in many ways trying to cut down on 504 plans, if, you know, if this list can achieve that, but there is no child, and I know Mrs. Leonardi is loving how I'm, you know, throwing 504s around, and I'm sorry, especially at this hour of the night, but the point being, there is no student's individual health needs that would be ignored, because they do have this recourse of, "This doesn't work for me, I need X, and I have the documentation." Then there is that allowance in here.
Can I get Mr. Fattabene an opportunity to ask questions, or do you have something else?
You know, I think we can talk about it separately.
Okay. Mr. Fattabene, you had a question?
All right, there's, I have two areas of interest here, right now. I'll go back to the food list, but right now, I want to ask another question.
Excellent.
And that is, is there a provision in this policy, as drafted, to permit a parent to request review of eligibility under a 504 plan?
Yes.
And can you point to the way that might be?
That is on page five, section three. The parent is part of the IHCP team, and so as part of that, if you look at four lines up from the bottom on the far right margin, "The team responsible for the IHCP shall refer the student under 504 or the IDEA as appropriate." And the parent as being part of that team, at that time, could advocate for, "I need 504 procedural safeguards."
If the team decides that parent isn't wrong for whatever reason, and they don't, the team acts as a team, as the parent may act as a parent. So in a little reading that, the team may say, "Parent, you're wrong. We're not recommending."
I am not trying to answer that question.
So anyway.
I've been trying to do it all myself, but...
Mr. Fattabene, you're asking what the process is from start to finish on that question?
I'm asking, wherein the policy permits a parent, on their own volition, or their own desire, to request a review of eligibility under a 504 plan? own desire, to request a review of eligibility under a 504 plan?
Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 gives parents the right to make a referral to the 504 team at any building for consideration of eligibility under 504.
That is the law. Is it in the policy?
Is it in the pol, the food allergy policy?
I question, is it in the policy? I understand the law requires that.
Doesn't say that specifically in the policy, but any parent can make a referral to IDEA or 504, and the 504 team has to take up that eligibility question.
Right. But that is, that would be, that instance would be permissible under the law, not under the policy necessarily.
But still permissible under the policy.
The policy may be silent on it, but there's no express provision in the policy which permits a parent to do that under our policy. We're required to provide that as a feature of the law, but it is not a feature of this policy, as I read it. And I guess we need clarification whether there is or not. That's just a question.
Yeah.
I don't think it's clear under this policy whether that's permitted under our policy. It's clearly permitted under the law, but, but...
Oh, I guess I'm not...
That's my distinction.
My question is, I don't see it, it's not expressly written in that policy, but given that it is permissible and, and available to parents under the law...
Right.
That it's not in the policy doesn't negate the fact that this Rehabilitation Act of 1973 allows for parents, as part of the team, to make a referral to the team for consideration of eligibility?
It was just a concern of mine that the parents be permitted to make that request as permitted by law, and whether the policy addressed that or not.
Can I just clarify a question? Are you talking about that as a line of education? Because obviously, the law trumps our policy. So, are you saying that as a part, using this as an educational piece? You see that as a missing factor?
I just, it's not addressed in the policy.
Okay.
And your second question?
Well, this is a more complicated one. No, I listened to a lot about both sides of this safe school snack list. And it's hard to determine where to go with this, and how workable any policy is with respect to identifying and permitting a safe school list, and who does that. Aside from any wording issues I may have with this section, which is section five under prevention, which identifies a safe school list, snack list, I would advocate some amendments for that if necessary at some point in time, because I don't think it's all that clear. For example, it refers to annually, at the start of the school year, the district committee will publish an approved safe school snack list. Well, I never, I don't know who that district committee is, because they never referred to before. They referred to a district-wide multidisciplinary team. I'm not certain whether they're the same or different. My assumption is they're meant to be the same, but maybe we need clarification of that. But that, they don't call it consistently the same term, so there may be some ambiguity as to who they might be.
That's where we missed you in policy.
And there's other areas in there where I would have issues with the wording to some degree. But the biggest issue, and I think the one as far as a policy and decision-making has to be made, is really, what should the policy include, and should it include a snack food list? And I understand the need and desire to have a, and the requirement to have safe schools. But preventing exposure to an allergen does not necessarily mean eliminating allergies. And that, that theory or concept is also advocated and indicated in the Connecticut Department of Education Guidelines for Managing of Life-Threatening Food Allergies, from which this group is supposed to make this list from. And they state, banning offended foods detracts from the school's responsibility to plan properly for children with life-threatening food allergies, and to educate all school personnel accordingly. So, in essence, what they seem to be saying to me is, our job is to plan accordingly and to educate people on responsibilities of preventing life-threatening...
We seem to be getting into debate as opposed to fact gathering.
They're commenting.
Okay.
Not necessarily.
The agenda wasn't planned for that length of debate, if you will, on the fundamentals.
I do want to follow up, because that is the quote most, that we have most frequently heard taken out of context. And that is in reference to the idea of banning foods from entire schools, which, while many people would absolutely advocate for, this policy committee has not. What comes right after that content is the quote that I read in my rather lengthy opening statement, which is, "In the course of coming up with these protocols, school options may include establishing allergen-free zones, such as a child's individual classroom." So, again, I did want to jump in on that one, because what Mr. Fadabean has cited absolutely is in the guidelines. It is in reference to banning foods from entire schools, not from individual classrooms, which is, in fact, recommended as a possible area of consideration, which is exactly what we're looking to do.
John, did you make your comment, or did you have a question?
I, you got a follow-up.
Oh, I'm sorry. You were talking about two things. Those were the two things.
Those were the two things. I may disagree with some of the comments, but those were the two things I wanted to address.
Thank you. Mr. Convertito?
I'll pass.
I think we had good discussion. I do want to get to the custodial contract, because that's under a time constraint. Is it a one-minute comment?
It is. Can I move to suspend the rules on the time?
Wait a second.
Ends at 11:00, right?
Yes, but...
I would like it extended till 11:30, not to a time indefinite.
What was your motion, Mr. Lou Ellen, before we...
Mine was to suspend.
Okay. Do we have a second to suspend, since the motion is in order? Do we have a second? I will say that it's not my intent, nor will I support a motion of indefinite extension of meetings. I would support Mrs. Maxon Cannelly's to 11:30, because I think we are developing a habit that is not a good habit. Any comments on the motion to suspend?
Point of order, are there two motions on the floor?
No, there's only one.
And what is that motion?
The motion is to suspend the rules to allow the meeting to continue. That's it. And that was indefinitely, and that was seconded by, made by Mr. Lou Ellen and seconded by Mrs. Lou McCormick. Any further questions or comments? All in favor to suspend, so that you understand indefinitely, the rules to allow the meeting to continue past 11:00, raise your hand and say aye. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Fadabean, Mr. Lou Ellen, all opposed? One, two, three, four, five, six. It requires a two-thirds vote, so that doesn't work. Do you wish to make another motion?
I'd make a motion to extend the meeting time to 11:30.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Ms. Cornell, second. Any conversation on that motion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Convertito, Mrs. Cornell, it's getting late, I apologize again. Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Fadabean, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, Mr. Lou Ellen, Mr. Patton, all opposed?
Oppose it.
We'll oppose it. It passes eight to one. We have 11:30. And so, Mr. Lou Ellen, was that your comment, or did...
That's my comment.
Okay. So, is there any further comment on the, this policy? If not, I'll give Mrs. Maxon Cannelly the last comment as the chair of the committee. Mr. Patton, I guess you have the last question.
Just, just brief. I got carried away with the list questions before my other ones. Keeping true to form, budgetary question, between the staff training and lots of unfunded state mandates that are thrown in here, and the creation of the multidisciplinary team, whatever that may be, do, I guess, through the chartered doctor title, do we have any inclination of any budget implications on the changes in this policy, small or large?
It's really hard to tell. I mean, you're going to provide a snack to every kid that comes in with a non-compliant snack. We're paying for that, right? Do I have that right under the policy? Okay. We have, there's no way to know, right? All depends on how many kids show up with them. We're going to have three wipes or something, right? Because they're going to wipe, you know? I don't know what that will do. I mean, so there's, there are some, but it's really hard to predict. So, the answer is a big, fat, we don't know.
But I was told minimal.
I don't know. We also do sound less precise.
So...
Minimal is in the eye of the beholder. They haven't gone through the budget process yet with me.
So, the answer is somewhere between who knows and minimal.
Who knows and minimal. We don't know.
Any other, if that's the last comment, again, this will be on the agenda for the November board meeting, regular meeting, to vote on it. If there are members who have further questions or comments, that you want to get to the chair so that she can be ready, please do. Mr. Fadabean, I guess you have the last comment.
I have a motion.
You said comments, you didn't say motions.
Okay.
Right? There are no more comments, right? I'm, I'm going to make a motion. And I, I always like to give a preface for the motion before I give a motion.
How about a motion first, and then I'll give you the second?
Motion first, so I can shout you down.
I think I'm entitled to some leeway for making whatever motion, whatever way I want. I can end it with a motion, or I can begin with a motion.
Please make the motion, Mr. Fadabean.
But anyway, I move to refer this back to committee for the purpose of making an effort to accommodate the requirements of the state statute without the necessity of a approved safe school snack list. And the purpose of that is, there seems to be a division with even the parents involved with allergens and children with allergens, and how best to address these issues.
So, we need to get the wording of the motion, so can, before you begin the debate, can I make sure that the secretary knows what your motion actually is, so that we get it correct?
The motion is to refer back to the policy committee, the proposed policy, for the purpose of making an effort to be in compliance with state statute and federal laws without the necessity of having an approved safe school snack list. Is that, is that clear?
I don't have a whole thing.
We have a tape, right?
But you spoke it slowly enough that we probably have the tape. Do board members understand Mr. Fadabean's motion, so that you could vote on it? And we will use the tape to get the exact wording. Is that fair? Is that true for every board member, that you understand Mr. Fadabean's motion?
I can try and rephrase it, but I can't guarantee I have the exact wording.
Okay. But we have the tape, as they said in Watergate. But first, is there a second to that? Is there a second to that? If there's no second, then the motion dies for lack of a second, and we will move on.
Mr. Dwyer? I just wanted to, as a final comment, I wanted to reiterate Mr. Dwyer's point to the board. I can't stress this earnestly enough, and I'll probably follow up with an email at some point, to please get me, I'm sure as you look this over, and as emails come in, that you will have additional questions. Please, please get them to me in advance. There is always that possibility that it is something I can't answer. I would like to be able to prepare staff to get that answer, if it's not something off the top of somebody's head. So, please, get me those questions in advance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, we'll move on to item B, under number seven, approval of the agreement between the bargaining unit for custodians. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the agreement between bargaining unit Fairfield Custodians-Maintenance Local 1779 of Council Number Four, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO, and the Fairfield Board of Education for the period July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2016. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, do I have a second? Mr. Convertito, is there any discussion? We're hearing no discussion. Is there any, this is a personal, yeah, no public comment on personnel matters, on contract matters. So, if we are ready for a debate, a vote, then all in favor of the contract, please raise your hand and say aye, or whatever. Mr. Con, your hands up, right? Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Convertito, Ms. Cornell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Fadabean, it's unanimous, now that I've seen the whole thing. Thank you very much. Item number C, final review of 1314 fiscal year, first quarter financial update. Ms. Moncel, Ms. Moncel, in the interest of time, I wonder if I could get you to focus on the first quarter financial update, since we have not seen that before, and then just quickly touch on the final review.
Sure.
Thank you.
First quarter 1415 report is enclosure 3B. I'm sure I don't need to say this, but I'm going to say it anyway. It's preliminary. It's only one quarter. Nothing unusual yet, at this point in time. We've expended 24% of our budget, which is what you would expect. Regarding personnel, we have an increase of 11.2 FTEs. 2.8 are certified, eight point, and these are net, 8.4 are non-certified. The 2.8 are various staffing adjustments across the district. The net 8.4 is net of 9.4 additional special ed paraprofessionals, and a reduction of the subcaller that was, is now a purchase service. We have an additional 19 and 1/2 teacher retirees, so there will be some savings there. Regarding the fixed charges, the benefits, the medical retention contribution has been made that we budgeted. Pupil services is showing a negative $170,000 balance right now. There's some large expenditures, such as OTPT, that aren't encumbered yet, so that, and as we know, that, you know, we'll have to wait and see what happens with pupil services. School and support expenditures, you know, typical beginning of school, startup. Maintenance, 25% of that budget is for utilities. Also impossible to project this early in the year. We are holding some maintenance projects, roughly $230,000, as budgetary precaution, and the projects that are being held regardless of the budget would be scheduled later in the year, anyway. Capital, we have had, we did make some capital purchases, mostly because of some deferred items due to the budget freeze last year. That's a quick summary, if that's, or you'd like me to stop.
Why don't we ask questions about the quarterly financial? Any questions from members of the quarterly financial? Mr. Lou Ellen?
Couple of questions. One, are we going to be doing this one now, or is that going to be covered in a second, and I'll hold the questions on that?
Which one are you talking about?
The healthcare. But while you're looking at that, you say on here that there were an additional 19.5 teacher retirements that budgeted. So, how many total retirees did we have?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. And how many teachers left the district?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
We'll get that number to you.
Please. Can we move on to A?
So, we'll deal with this one after we get all through all questions on the quarterly.
Okay.
Any other questions on the quarterly report? Any other questions on the quarterly report? Hearing none. Do you have any comments that you want to make on the year-end 1314 statement?
Medical retention?
No, no, just on the document in itself.
1314.
I mean, that's part of it. You're welcome to go with that, but it's...
That's enclosure 3A. The final pre-audit financials for 1314, we closed, we projected in June, at the June 24th meeting, a balance of $36,000. We closed on June 30th in that range, slightly less, around $35,000. On July 31st, we had our final closure. There was a balance of $97,000 and change. What happens is, between the June 30th and the, and the end of July, when we finally close, encumbrances that were made before June 30th settle up. You know, we get final invoices, and there's some residual balances. For instance, we project legal fees. We have a number encumbered in there. When we finally get the bills, there could be a balance left over on those encumbrances. They totaled up to $62,000. So, at June, July 31st, we ended with $97,000 and change. We had an agreement with the first selectman and the town finance officer that any of those residual balances could be moved into the medical retention fund, and that's what we did. So, that's, that's 1314. I can go into the medical retention fund unless you have questions on that. Good, okay. We received the final IBNR from the actuaries. There, the, let's see, net changes. The net fund balance for June 30th, 14 increased 117,000 to the, you know, so 117,000 to the better for the net fund balance.
And that's where it's on here?
I'm sorry?
Sorry, where is that on here?
Where is that on there?
Which box are you referring to?
The net fund balance is the very last line and it's the difference between the 14, 1314 column in red and the yellow, June 30th, 1314 column.
In red.
The 679 versus the 796.
Bottom line?
Last line.
676. Oh, way over on the right, got it, thank you.
And the projected net fund balance for June 30th, 16, 15, improved by 109,000, which brought it from a negative 854 to a negative 745.
Any further comments that you want to make and then if not, we'll go to questions?
Nope, that's fine.
Questions, Mr. Llewellyn?
Sure. So do we have a negative fund balance there, right? Where did we end on that at year end? What was the June 30th cash position in, in the medical retention fund? Because we have a claims payable at year end of 1.3 million. We had a due to the general fund of 486,000 and we had a systems fund balance of about 842. So where, and I didn't think I saw any cash.
The final, okay, the final would be, there's, the final numbers are the last two yellow columns?
Okay.
The first yellow column is the final 1314. If you go down to the bottom where it's in pink, that's the cash balance, 2,346.
Okay.
And then the, the actuarial IBNR, the final IBNR was 1,550, which gave us a net fund balance of 796. The final number, the last line.
Right. Okay.
Anything further?
So, oh yeah, hold on, I'm sorry, let me just, so if we look at the top here in peach, I guess is the color, you've got a 7.5% trend and 8.6% trend. What is the first trend that you're using? Are those the only two trends or what's the baseline? Because we have a whole bunch of different colors and trends going on here.
Well, that's, that's just the history of what happened over the budget process. The trend for the 1415 is 8.6.
1415 is 8.6, I see that, okay. So 1415, you also see another one here that says 7.5.
That was, you mean way back when?
That's way back when we first started the budget process.
Okay, so we're not going with that one now?
Correct.
And what trend, I guess we'll be talking about that in the budget, will we be voting on what trend we want to use?
Aon will come in and give you a recommendation.
So Aon will come in?
December.
In December, yeah.
Okay.
They're working on it now.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, their actuaries are working on it.
Okay.
Whoever does trend in the black box is working on it.
That's for 1516.
That's for 1516, right. They've, they've told us to use 8.6 for this, for this year. I should also point out, while you're contemplating, that we have, if all goes well with the school security infrastructure bond that is going to move through the town bodies in the early winter, if that goes well, that we would have $160,000 of the current operating budget to make an additional deposit into the current year dollars.
Okay.
Which would be applied to that last column over to the right.
Yeah, we would put it up in the, you know, up in the income, I don't know, somewhere.
Somewhere.
Yeah, it would reduce the projected deficit or increase the cash balance, take your pick.
Okay. So in other income, other income revenue, down the bottom line, there says food service removed proposed 1415. What is that footnote referencing? And I'm in this box here, sorry, because it's small. I guess another way to put it, is there any liability in here for food service or food service on their own plan now?
No, during the budget process, during the 1415 budget process, we took food service out of the equation. The subsidy that, you know, that they were giving us towards our budget, that's gone. So that was built into the budget.
Okay, so that's, that line is, that's just a residual line because it's no longer proposed?
The line doesn't need to be there because there are no numbers in it?
Okay.
Well, yeah.
So there's no, there's no liability in here at all? It's all rolled out?
Right.
Food service is off the equation.
Okay, I thought so, I just saw that note and that made me wonder if there's a residual in here.
I think that refers back to.
It's an old.
Yeah, no problem.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it? I, I'd like to take note, kind of say, where did we, there was some conversation in the middle of the year about how far behind we are in terms of the target that we were looking at. And if you go from about the ninth column over, it's one of the salmon colored ones and the net fund balance is shown as a negative 1823. That's about the high point for how far behind we are from a variety of reasons. We have now whittled it down to 745,000, which is the last column, last line, all the way over to the right. That'll come down another 160 if all things stay equal and, and the security plan comes in. So we're whittling our way down to where we should be.
I have one more comment if I could, please. Do you think for the next time we do this, we can do the columns like either numbered or lettered so we can reference column C or column A? It's easier than peach, peach and.
Could we also get it on a sheet of legal paper so I can read it?
And maybe.
You have the same problem I do. See, I'm not the only one, Doreen.
Yeah, I know.
I'm going to institute the eight-point font rule.
Right, we're going to make every.
So we'll.
Exactly, we have the facilities on paper.
11:30 is on its way. We will balance off the cost of magnifying glasses for each of you versus legal paper. Did you have a question, Mr. Convatito?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a quick motion, ask unanimous consent for items 8A and B so we can move along.
Are we done with this? Right? You don't have a question on that agenda item? We're still on this agenda item, so. Okay, so we'll put this aside. Do we want to just take a quick motion to do the minutes and move on or rather than suspend it?
I can't do unanimous consent.
Yeah, okay. So the recommended motion for, and with one objection, we can't take unanimous consent. The recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of September 23rd, do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Convatito, any questions? Hearing no questions, all in favor, say aye, raise your hand for the, for the minutes of the special meeting of minutes September 23rd. Mr. Convatito, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Phil Dwyer, for the minutes of the 23rd, are we voting, Mr. Fattabene?
I'm abstaining because I was not present.
You're abstaining, you're abstaining, you're abstaining. Is your hand up for a vote? Okay.
I was just going to see if my pencil was heavy.
Okay. Any opposed? Are there any opposed? Okay, so abstains now. Do we have abstain, one abstention for Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Fattabene, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
504, perfect number. It's been a number tonight.
504, so it passes. 504, capacity of Hill Hill. The minutes of, of the regular meeting that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 23rd, 2014, do I have a motion? Mr. Convatito, seconded Mrs. Gerber, all in favor. Now, did somebody miss the regular meeting? So, okay, all in favor of the regular meeting, Mr. Convatito, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Llewellyn, and Mr. Patton, all opposed? No opposed, any abstentions? Any abstentions?
I'm abstaining.
Abstention for Mr. Fattabene and Mrs. Maxon Cannelly. It passes 722, 702. Superintendent's report.
You want me to be brief?
I want you to do about two minutes.
I'll do less.
Okay.
I'll do less. I just want to point out, because this was staff members' work and I know you got an email about it, but, you know, we don't have a communications department here.
You're reading into your two minutes.
I know, I know, I know, I know. That, Doreen, we won first place for the district budget, excellence in education, communication, first place. And we honorable mention for the PowerPoint we did on the budget presentation to the town bodies, the English language arch curriculum that you got last year from Mr. Chiappetta, I want to give him a shout out for that. And our website with our new webmaster won an honorable mention as well and we expect him to win first place next year because he'll have been with us for longer. All right, that's that. I'll just, very briefly, on the security plan, it really is built into the long-range waterfall, you see it in there as a placeholder. We just had a meeting with first selectmen, we're finalizing the list. We will have a firm proposal for you in December along with all the other capital non-recurring projects. And we're working with the police chief who will tell us what we can say publicly and what we can't. Right now, we feel like we're going to do most of this in open session. Okay, that the documents that we're going to give, that'll have to go to the other town bodies, will be sufficiently, whatever, redacted, that we'll be able to have the conversation in public so people have the general idea of what we're doing. So that's coming, we're on track, coming soon. Christmas present for you. Okay, I'm done.
On those two, on those two items, any comments or questions from the board, CAAB or the security infrastructure?
Under two minutes.
Yes.
While we're asking security, one of the, one of the questions that was asked in public comment was about the security and, and how we're paying for security at like football games. Is that coming out of a, of a school budget? How did that work?
Gate receipts.
Gate receipts. So it's coming out of the private fund or whatever it's called?
It's the, it's, not private.
Not private, it's called a.
There's no private funds.
What's that called? Fund 25, I know the number, Fund 25.
Student activity account? Special student activity account, I think is the right term. But it's, it comes out of gate receipts, not a budget item for the board.
Okay, thank you.
Well, can I ask a question?
Yes, you can.
Where would those monies normally go if they weren't needed for security?
Mr. Hatsetts has left.
I mean, are we, are we not providing?
They pay for the costs of the athletic program that aren't covered by the budget. So they go into paying other security costs that we have. You know, so they pay for security, they pay for the people that take the tickets, they pay for people that are running security that we pay extra to, they.
Does our ward housemaster want to expand on that or is that an adequate answer?
They pay for athletic costs.
You're welcome to say he didn't get it right.
Yeah, please, tell me if I didn't get it right, it's late and you're here being a trooper.
It's accurate, okay.
Oh my God. Believe me, if it was not accurate, he would love to come up in public and tell me.
Mr. Fattabene, did that answer your question?
Yeah, my concern was just that, you know, when you spend money on one thing, you don't have money for another thing. And I just want to know what the other thing.
Thank you. Onto item number 10A. I assume the chair of the committee will be introducing this so that we can get a quote first read and put this on for action in November. Do you have some apparently brief comments to make before we, before we hit the hour?
Should I read these or should I just make my comments since we don't have time really to ask some questions? Okay, so as we recall, last, this is now a year running. So last November, when bylaws were presented, there were three items that were voted to be reviewed by an ad hoc committee. And the ad hoc committee was formed at the very end of the summer and since then, we have had the opportunity to meet four times. And I would say thank you to the public who took the time to come and express their opinions and share color as well as any members who gave their feedback as well. We tried to, as a group, consider the language that we had used and always with the idea that we were trying to improve our bylaws so that we can become a more effective board to further the learning of students in the district. And so what we did, as laid out in prior conversations, was take a look at various goals and objectives of other districts as part of the input considered, as well as speaking to kind of senior attorneys at CAAB. I think we had some conversations with CES. We tried to get some feedback from administration, which was much appreciated, and also get public feedback. And as a result, we came and we revised some of the language. And one of the, I think, resounding comments about the first bylaw was that it was preferred that we should take all of the language and all of the bullet points rather than cherry picking the items. If we are going to take language from the Connecticut Association of the Boards of Education, take the wording in its entirety, which we did, borrowing the changing of very minor words. So you can see they're underlined. The third bullet point, we changed developing to working to develop trust with municipal officials. And when talking about the budget, we wrote developing in collaboration with the superintendent, approving and monitoring implementation of the budget. And I would say that all of these efforts, and I don't want to just take these few minutes to reiterate why we're going through this hassle of revising our bylaws, why are we bothering, right? Bylaws are bylaws, they're good enough. Well, what I, what I have found after having sat on this board for a year is sometimes people do want to live by the letter of the law and we do things when we're told that we must do them. And while this board may be composed of, you know, we nine individuals, that board can change in the coming years. And what we want to make sure is that we have a process in place that assures that we are constantly bringing the conversation back and focusing on student learning. And I think while we do attempt to do that, sometimes it does become absent and we want to instill policies that assure that we brought that concept back. And I wanted to just read the quote from CAAB that I thought was so good when they said it's all about student achievement. "Local Board of Education members are besieged with numerous competing issues, student discipline, budget, problems with school buses, negotiating teacher contracts are just a few examples. It is easy to forget that the primary purpose of a Board of Education is to ensure high achievement for all students. Board members must keep this in mind to ensure that board meetings stay focused on student learning and that other discussions do not overshadow this most important task." And I think that's just very important for us to always keep in mind and when we bring forth these proposals, it's with this in mind and for no other reason that we want to edit our language and constantly be reviewing it to improve it rather than just living with what we had in prior years. So for this first one, we did reference the CAAB pamphlet for the bullet points. And it was mentioned to review the governance letter, but the governance letter is like 10 years old and it was very lengthy and detailed and held some concepts like the board would have to approve all administrative hires and concepts like that, which taking that language in its entirety probably is more than we really need. These bullet points that we lifted in their entirety from the pamphlet were actually very well related to what we currently have in place in our bylaws. And if you look at the chart that I had included in the back, which is responsibilities of the board, amendment proposal of bylaw 8100, you'll see that we actually mapped each of the proposed bylaws from CAAB to the existing language that was in our, our current bylaws. And you can see how in fact I think that they are more complete and they give context to the meaning of what was intended for the board's role to be for, for full clarity. And I know I have a few minutes left.
Well, actually, I have to do a couple of things, so if you wait till 11:30, then I won't be able to.
Well, just remember, we did wait a year to cover this. So to relegate it to five minutes, I'm doing the best I can.
The introduction of it, we'll have plenty of time to debate it in the background.
To debate it, okay, good. And then the second proposal, actually, the second two seem to be packaged inside the, our commission statement. But the second proposal discussed the concept of short-term goals, objectives, and action plans which relate directly to the CAAB bullet point number, I think, the fourth bullet point, where it talks about developing, implementing, and monitoring the district's policies, including short and long-term goals. These policies serve as the roadmap for the school district, they give direction to the administration and staff, and become the foundation for accountability. These are very powerful words and I would say that in conjunction with that, we should have a process by. have a process by which the board conducts its business in formulating these short-term goals and objectives, which to date, we currently do not have a process at all relating to. Okay? So we have listed there the process, and then the final proposal is related to the strategic plan, which everything needs to kind of pull back to that. And we haven't done a strategic plan review in, I'm not sure how many, several years. So we're finally doing one this year, which is wonderful news. However, I think as a process, the board should theoretically be reviewing the strategic plan annually, and that is simply what this bylaw says, is that the board shall annually review its strategic plan. And with the superintendent, will publicly assess the progress, the intended outcomes, and recommend adjustments, so that we can incorporate them for the next year, which would then funnel back into our short-term goals, our longer-term goals. This should all be kind of a circle of how we can actually become effective and implement the policy successfully, and decide if, in fact, our policies are being effective or not, and if they're not, how we can change them to make them more effective. It's kind of a whole process and a circle, that I think that we, as a board, should be looking to try to enhance on our side, because that's one area that I believe that we could be doing better. And I think the committee agreed, as well as the public that attended largely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This will be on the November regular meeting agenda. As a reminder to the board, these two were left over from last year, the two, if you will, but have been subdivided into three different recommendations. There was another one that related to changing, getting the bylaw revision policy to conform with Robert's rules. I would ask board members that if there's anything, because November is when we review bylaws annually, so if there are board members that have any other changes that they would like to recommend beyond these two, that will automatically be on the agenda. Protocol would be that you give a written document to board members in advance, so they can study it, and they can read it, and they know what it is that you're proposing. So I would ask all of you if you wish to have something to get it to make brown in time for inclusion in the packet of the November regular meeting. And if you have any new ideas that are going to be coming up, I will slot those in in conformance with our agreement last year, that the change of the bylaw process ought to be the last thing that we vote on, so that it, so that you're doing it under the rules that currently exist. So I'll slot, I'll slot those in right after the ad hoc committee. Did you have a question?
So I want to be very clear about this, because we, there was obviously dissension on this last year. Is this be that, that there will be text?
I believe it's 11:30.
What is the clock over there say?
What does the iPhone say?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fattabene.
Is text being presented?
Mr. Fattabene, 11:29.
Is text being presented and voted on in November, or is it being presented in November and voted in December?
Voted on in December, in November. Okay.
Paul, let me ask my deputy a question.
We now have 11:30.
It's 11:30.
We are adjourned without motion, as the bylaws have us adjourned without motion.